I know, I did the research too. I didn't copy anything, but I did the research too, I know.
Well, I'm proud of you.
Well, thank you. I, I, I thought it was a little odd, but. What ain't?
Amen to that.
I know, I don't be going unless there's something interesting. Uh huh. Especially in March and April, you make me mad. Three and O, I mean, we had.
Right.
Got western this.
Let me call this to order. It is seven P M. on September the twelfth, twenty twenty four. We are opening our monthly town council meeting. We will begin with our pledge of allegiance. If you'll join me in standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Give me, you want to do our, you want me to? Mr. Jones, our council member is going to do our invocation for us.
Bow your heads if you would please. Dear Lord, once again, we come before you for our monthly town council meeting. Having just passed our memorial for the September the eleventh event that occurred in our country and help us to always be mindful of those that serve us, those that have perished in our country for, they were victimized by those that would do us harm and help us to be ever vigilant. We ask that you give us counsel wisdom to make decisions from the behalf of our citizens and ask that you be with each one of our citizens and that they would, that you would lead God and direct them in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Review our agenda. If there are no questions or discussion, I make a motion that we adopt the agenda as it is. Mr. Rigsby?
Aye.
Hold on, Mayor.
I'm sorry.
I'd like to, well, uh, Mr. Foye and I just discussed this. We, we would like to combine agenda items thirteen and fourteen. They're so similar in nature that I, I feel like that would, is the right thing to do. And for the purposes of the town's records, they would just be listed in the minutes as discussion of Athens Road and Angel Pardue Road intersection and discussion of Stokesdale Elementary School traffic.
Is there any objection? My motion stands with this exception that we combine the thirteen and fourteen. Mr. Landrith seconds. Mr. Rigsby?
Aye.
Mr. Foye?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I am also aye. I would like to present, um, Kavisha, you need to help me out. It's the last name. Your last name. Abakun?
Um, yeah, it's Abecon.
Abecon. Abecon. Just like it spelled. That's very good. Kavisha, we want to present this to you, um, for the grand work that you have done on our, um, park. Give me just one second. No. Make sure I got my stuff together. That is. Gotcha. Gotcha. Uh, Kavisha?
Yeah?
Constructed a, uh, pollinator garden at the town park and she'd like to make a brief presentation regarding her project. Please. Welcome, Kavisha.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. Um, thank you for inviting me to speak about my project. My name is Kavisha Abecon. I'm a Girl Scout in troop four, one, seven, three, eight. I'm currently in the eleventh grade and I currently go to North Carolina School of Science and Math. And I'm here to talk about my Girl Scout Gold Award project. Before I talk about my project, I first want to tell about the fundamental idea of a Girl Scout Gold Project. You can cut the, yeah. So the fundamental idea of a Girl Scout Gold Award project is to look around your community and the world around you and find a problem or an idea that you're passionate about. Then you figure out a couple of ways to solve the problem or spread awareness about that problem. For me, the issue that I was really passionate about was pollinators. Why pollinators? Well, last year I volunteered at the Greensboro Science Center where I loved working in the butterfly house. It was my favorite place to volunteer and I was fascinated by the butterflies in there and I started researching about them. And through this, I learned about how crucial butterflies are to the environment and to us. And soon that research kind of transferred into research about pollinators. Pollinators such as butterflies, bees and birds are, play an essential role in pollination. And pollination is like the process of the transfer of pollen from one flower to another. And this process allows plant reproduction, which is essential and without pollinators, we couldn't have the biodiversity, the soil quality, the food production and the water quality that we have today. Unfortunately, many pollinated populations are disappearing. And when I learned about that, I was inspired to help address this issue and figure out a way to help increase pollinated populations in the community around me. So this is just about the five main components of a Girl Scout Gold Award project. The first step in any Girl Scout Gold Award project is addressing a root cause. My, my issue was the decline of pollinated populations. And when I was researching about that, two main reasons stood out. Habitat loss of pollinated population, habitat loss of the pollinators and the lack of knowledge about how important pollinators are to us and the environment. The first reason was habitat loss. As more land is developed for agriculture and cities, our pollinators lose both their food source and their habitats. And habitat, habitat loss is actually the leading cause of their population decline. So as a way of addressing that issue, I wanted to create a garden in Stokesdale Park to provide pollinators with a home and a food source. The second main root cause that I picked was a lack of awareness about pollinators. Before researching about pollinators, I did not realize how essential they are to my well being and the fact that their populations were decreasing globally. If more people knew about how important our pollinators are to us and the world around us and how they're, and the fact that they're declining in the first place, addressing other root causes would be much more feasible. I knew I had to address this root lack of knowledge and the, the lack of awareness about this. So I decided to create classes to teach kids about pollinators so they are more aware from a very young age. Um, wait, it's still like the first, sorry. So the other two part, there's five parts and the second part is having a national or global link. The way I wanted to do this was through, through creating a website, which I will talk about later on this presentation. The third part is demonstrating leadership. The main way I demonstrated leadership was by leading classes and educating kids of various ages about pollination, pollinators and how important they are to us. The fourth, yeah, sorry. The fourth part is ensuring that my project is sustainable, so it outlasts my contributions and my duration of the project. The sustainable components of my project came from my website, my garden beds in Stokesdale Park and the library that's next, the small library that is next to the garden. The last step is that the project must show measurable impact. This means that I should be able to measure how much impact I had on either the kids or on the garden or just on the lack, like the knowledge in the, in the community around me. I assess this through, um, a few, two steps. The first way is the website created. I can go to the website and check how much visitors have come to my website and that's the first way I measure my impact. And the second way is by tracking the number of visitors, I mean, by, by having quizzes in my classes to see how much knowledge the kids have acquired and seeing how I can improve my classes based on their, the quiz scores. So this was, now that I explained my project in the context, context of a gold award guidelines, I want to summarize the main components of my project. So this is my project in an eggshell. The fifty percent, fifty percent of my garden, of my project was from the pollinator garden and that took place from April to September. And then I had about thirty percent of my project being the pollinated classes that I taught, which was from June to early August. And then the website and the book that I wrote, a children's book, composed of ten, individually composed of ten percent. And that was mainly in the summertime that I spent time on those two parts. So now that you know about my project in eggshells, I kind of want to like divide it. So first I want to talk about the pollinated garden. So this is my pollinated garden and, um, I created two garden beds with flowers that attracted pollinators. The flowers that I picked was, was various flowers, including zinnias, cone flowers, verbinas, cosmos and much more. As you can see, I painted the, um, garden beds yellow and purple, not just because they're really pretty colors, but also because these colors attract a lot of pollinators. And, and they're naturally attracted to these colors. I also want to discuss the continuation of my project. I've been in contact with a local Girl Scout troop that meets near the Stokesdale Park and they are considering helping out, maintain the project every year until, you know, the Girl Scout, um, troop ends. Additionally, I would like to just say that this garden is not just my project, it is part of the Stokesdale community. So anyone here and anyone in Stokesdale is welcome to contribute by adding flowers or wanting the garden when needed, whenever you're available or would like to. And the, wait, can you go back a little bit? I just like to say that those pictures are mine and I'm really proud of the, the butterfly picture I took. It was really, I thought it looked really pretty. I just want to say that. So these are the pollinated classes. My pollinated classes was held at both the Greensboro Science Center, which, where young kids like go to summer camps and also in Guilford College, United Methodist Church. Throughout my project, I taught over ninety kids ranging from ages six to twelve. And in those classes, um, these kids made over two hundred seed balls and seed balls are just like paper, mushed up paper and seeds and over the two hundred seed balls, there was over five hundred pollinator attracting flowers. And these, these seeds was planted across the county. And also I was talking about the quiz scores to measure my impact. All the class quizzes, um, the average score from, all from ages six to twelve was over ninety percent. So it shows that they have really acquired a knowledge for about what pollinators are, what pollination is about. Um, yes, next one. So these are the final aspects, the ten percents I was talking about. The first one is the website I created. The website includes information about pollination, types of pollinators, fun facts about them, their importance and several ways people can help pollinate populations from ranging from really easy and really simple to kind of hard, like how to grow your own pollinated garden, like the one that I grewed in, um, Stokesdale Park. And if you would like to visit the website, you can just scan the Q R code displayed here. And also, I'll talk about the library later. Wait, can you go on the next one? Sorry. So this is the library that's right next to the pollinator garden, if you can see. And the library contains a wide variety of books about pollination and pollinators, ranging from nonfiction to fiction. So, um, people are more than welcome to borrow the book to read while walking around the park. These books were generously donated by the Arsdale Park Public Library, so I just want to say I'm very thankful of them. And if you can see, the front of the library has a Q R code and that also goes to my website. So while you're like walking around the park, you can definitely scan it and learn more about pollinators. In addition, I wrote a fictional, um, children adventure book about a girl named Lily who learns about pollination and how pollinators contribute to the process. And I just thought it was a fun way to encourage kids to learn more about pollinate, pollinators. And I don't have the book currently in the library, but it will be there by September twentieth for anyone to borrow and read. And there might be like a Q R code there for, if you would like to buy the book after, um, reading the book for your kids or anything else. And then lastly, I have my acknowledgements. At first, I would like to thank the people that made this project possible, which first includes Stokesdale Town Council for allowing me to create a garden at Stokesdale Park. I'm very thankful for you all for allowing me to do this. And then I would also like to thank, uh, Mr. Kevin Combs for his generous donation of the wood needed for the two garden beds. His generosity has really played a very crucial role for bringing this project to life and from allowing me to actually build the beds. And I would also like to thank my project advisor, Mr. Courtney Vass from a Greensboro Science Center for advising me throughout the ward and also allowing me to teach kids in the Greensboro Science Center. And I would also like to thank my troop leaders, uh, Ms., uh, Ms. Hannah Hensa, who's not here right now and Ms. Rebecca Smith right there for really helping me throughout the entire Gold Award project and not just the Gold Award project, but also being role models in my life and also throughout my whole Girl Scout, um, journey. I'm really thankful for you guys. And lastly, I want to thank my mom and my dad for being there at every step. And their love and support has really been the, like, only reason I actually completed this project and for like my greatest strength in the entire project. My mom, my dad wasn't able to be here, but my mom's here and I'm really thankful for them. And that's it. If you have any questions, um, you could ask. There's like, yeah.
Good job.
Thank you.
Kavisha, if you would, come up, please. We've got a plaque we'd like to present to you.
Picture.
This is in recognition of your project that you've done for us and we are very, very grateful.
Mayor Crawford, you want to get a picture of the entire council?
No.
Hurts my feelings.
At least get ten of them.
Last month, we had the voice caps in.
You want this before you get to the.
Michael, we go ahead.
All right, actually, ready?
Good job.
Next, we have consideration of a proclamation in recognition of Constitution Week.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Appreciate it. As mayor of the town of Stokesdale, I do hereby proclaim September seventeenth through September the twenty-third, twenty twenty-four to be Constitution Week and I ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in seventeen eighty-seven by vigorously protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. And I would ask that Kim Thompson come up, please.
Guys, want to join?
You sure you want to?
Come on. I understand you want to bring your husband up?
Well, he's going to take a picture. Yeah, he's going to take a picture.
Okay, well, very good. There is the official proclamation.
Well, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am, thank you for recognizing.
Absolutely.
Thank you, too.
Say cheese. Cheese. And on behalf of James Luther Chapter, we thank you all for doing this and bringing awareness to our constitution.
Thank you.
As you can see, we have some documents in the back that we do.
That's it. Oh, I guess I missed something.
Do you want a picture?
I don't know.
Constitution?
Yes.
Come on. I thought we'd done, I'm sorry.
You thought you were going to sit down. It's going to make my job easier tonight. I'll just put all pictures. Hey, there you go, nice job. Okay. Appreciate bringing, you know, everything to this constitution. Thank you, everybody.
Next, we go to review and adopt the following minutes. The first is March thirteenth, twenty eighteen. It is a closed session meeting. I make a motion that this be adopted.
Oh, hold on just a second.
My motion is that we adopt the closed session minutes of March thirteenth, twenty eighteen. Mr. Jones?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I had to step out for something.
That's quite all right.
I've got a request to cancel. These closed session meeting minutes from two thousand eighteen, I'd like to hold until I can review them. I was the only one on council and, uh, staff has, uh, accomplished this task at our direction. But since they send, they lay them out in front of me sealed just before meetings, I haven't had a ti- time to read them. And as a matter of fact, I haven't looked at the ones for September and November of two thousand twenty. I don't know what to do about that practice.
Are you asking that we hold all four?
That would be my preference.
Any discussion on this?
Well, I don't care. I've already read, I read them yesterday.
How did you do that?
They were here. You had dudes come up there and read them. But that's okay. If you hadn't read them, I don't want to hold on, because you're the only one here. It's only going to be one yay.
Well, you know, I have to work occasionally.
I mean, that's fine. That's fine. I don't mind. If you want all of it, so you just.
Well, in particular, I think it's in the council's best interest that the, uh, ones for, that I review the ones from two thousand eighteen.
All right, let's continue all four. If there's, if there's no, if there's no objection, we'll hold those over for the next session.
I'll move that we adopt the regularly, regular town council meeting minutes from May the ninth, twenty twenty-four. I'll second.
Any discussion? Mr. Rigsby?
Aye.
Mr. Foye?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
I am also aye. We have June thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, regular town council meeting minutes. I make a motion that we adopt those minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Rigsby?
Aye.
Mr. Foye?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I am aye. We have the July eleventh, twenty twenty-four, regular town council meeting minutes. I make a motion that we adopt those minutes.
Second.
Any discussion?
Aye.
Mr. Rigsby, Mr. Foye?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I am also aye. We're down to public safety reports. Our fire chief is with us this evening.
Good evening, citizens and council.
Good evening.
So for the month of August, we ran a total of eighty-seven calls. Of those, thirty-seven were medical, fourteen were fire related and thirty-six fell in the other category. I like to kind of give a brief safety message every month, so I want to touch on something that I've never really talked about. We talk about home safety for our children and everything else. So I want to talk about safety tips for your pets. Okay, something, something just a little different. And when I went through that, uh, it's amazing how we try to teach our pets not to do some of the same things that we teach our children not to do. And I was like, wow, the, the comparison there might be easier to teach our pets than it is our children.
Granted.
But, uh, absolutely. But, um, you know, some of the, some of the things that we don't think about and it's easy to do, it's like keeping your dog away from the stove. Uh, you know, if they maybe tend to jump up or they jump on you while you're around a stove with hot pots and things like that, or maybe the stove's on, you open the oven or something like that. And also a lot of times we don't think about the countertops. You know, you may have a hot pot or something sitting on a countertop. Could be an appliance, just, just anything like that, that, um, you know, your animal. Uh, uh, what I have found out is, is a lot of folks' animals are just like their children and when their children leave home, the animals take the children's place. So we, we want to treat them with the, the same regard that we, we do our kids. Keep away from candles, uh, lamps, you know, anything that's, that's a open flame fireplace, anything like that, because we all know, you know, we, we like, um, we like to sit beside of a fireplace, something warm. Well, you know, your animals like to be beside of those as well. Just be careful with them. If you use candles, which a lot of people do, use flameless candles, especially if you have multiple pets or, or you have a pet that, that you haven't trained that well. The same thing for your pets that we tell you at Christmas and stuff to prevent fires, always try to keep a three-foot barrier. And I say that regardless of your pets, you, your children, whatever, from anything that, that may burn you, that may catch fire. You know, that's just a, a good rule, three foot around. And one is kind of hard to do and that's never go back inside a burning structure for your animal. Tell the first firefighters that are there what you've got going on. Now, you know, it's easy to sit here and say not do that, but when you've got something that you love like your children, it's taking the place of it. I, I realize that sometimes that's a hard thing to do, but it's not the best thing to do. Let, let the fire department know when they first get there. So just something a little different this month. We'll talk about, about our pets in the house. Other than that, I hope everybody has a good night.
Thanks, Todd.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Just a suggestion. Where my, my daughter has a condo, which she lives, they have to put on the front door a little sticker that lets people know that it's doors with cats in it. This way the buyer in the apartment knows that you can get there.
Right.
So it's a suggestion, you know, like we put out numbers, which we got from the people. That should be done as well.
So I'm, I'm not familiar with that. I'm not saying that's not something that could be, could, could be done. I would think that that may be more of an individual choice and here's why. Let's just say that you move and the next person that moves in does not have a pet.
Well, she puts it on the glass so she can break the door.
Yeah. But I mean, that's something that we can obviously take a look at, we can consider, see if there's something out there for that.
What did you tell us about child stickers? I recall something you said that you, you didn't recommend them.
Yeah, that, that used to be a really, that used to be a really big thing. It's called child finder, tot finder, different things and you put them on windows. Unfortunately, because of the, how can I say this politically correct? Because of the way some things go in society today, do you really want people knowing first floor windows where your children, the room your children and all are? So we, we got away from that. We don't want to put the children in any harms way at all.
Okay.
Kidnap risk and that sort of thing.
Yeah.
Pedophiles.
That too.
It'd be the same way with a dog.
He don't mind saying it.
Right.
Thank you, Todd. Thank you very much. Next, next we have the, um, Sheriff's Department report. Robbie, would you like to do it? You'd like me to do it?
I don't mind.
Let's see. Would the sheriff do it?
Sheriff do it? Is our sheriff here?
Sheriff is not here.
Not tonight.
Sheriff can't do it.
So this is the sheriff's report for the month of August. The sheriff's office responded to a total of one hundred ninety-six calls for service in the Stokesdale Town Limits, resulting in sixteen case reports. Of note, on August the sixth, twenty twenty-four, deputies responded to a disturbance in the parking lot of down four twenty lane at eight five zero zero U S Highway one fifty-eight, in which a gun was pointed during a dispute. A twenty-year-old male was arrested and charged with misdemeanor assault by pointing a gun. Deputies and detectives made multiple drug-related arrests following investigations throughout the month, resulting in the seizure of fentanyl, crack cocaine, methamphetamines, marijuana and firearms that resulted in numerous drug-related charges. Calls by type. This is the type of call upon initial dispatch. Call nature often was changed after further investigation upon deputy arrival. Numbers to note on the map indicate multiple calls for service in the same location. One burglary of a residence, two disturbances, twenty-one alarm, one alcohol, one indecent exposure, thirteen domestic, one weapon offense, six warrant, one vandalism, one theft of shoplifting, five theft, seven trespassing, thirty-nine traffic, two hazard, one drug, one missing person, one motor vehicle theft, one noise cancer, noise violation, two accident, seventy-six other and thirteen suspicious. And that's it.
Okay, um, thank you, Robbie.
Yes, sir.
Administrative reports, our town clerk?
Yes.
Mr. Robbie Wagner?
So I'll start off with the water system report. We've had six meters installed, fifty-two meters in stock, eight applications for transfer of service and water meters in, thirty water meters and applications on hold for builders, nineteen work orders, seventy-five eight-one-ones, eight-hundred-and-twenty-eight water bills mailed out, and fifteen reservations. And I'll give a brief overview of some of the water-related projects we've got going on. Not much of an update on the Coldwater Road and Blues Creek Road. Update, same as last month, on August the fifth, Mayor Crawford, Councilman Jones and I had met with Hazen and Sawyer just to get some updates on this project. Do have a good update on the water line extension project for Ellisboro Road. You guys will discuss that later tonight. I think it's agenda item number ten on the fifth of September. Contractors submitted bids to the town for the Ellisboro Road Water Line Extension Project. They were formally opened and reviewed by myself, along with Tim Kinnonley and Nicole Kinnonley of Kinnonley Hearing Design. And to assist you all with your decision tonight, Mr. Kinnonley has provided you guys with a recommendation, as well as a bid summary and a unit cost analysis. And just keep in mind, October sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, is our lead service line inventory, which you guys will also be discussing later tonight. So, for the administrative report, I put it in your packet, so I won't go over all of them, but of note, I was fortunate enough, on August twenty-first through the twenty-fifth, I was able to attend the NCAMC Summer Conference in Charlotte. It was great. And, let's see, other than that, I guess of note, on September the twentieth, which is next Friday, I'll attend the NCAMC Board of Directors Meeting in Raleigh. And, let's see, on October the second, I'll be meeting with Jesse Day from the PTRC to get some follow-up on their progression of our, their assessment of our development ordinance as far as compliance with one sixty D. So, if there's any questions.
The Board of Directors Meeting in Raleigh, could you back up to that? What is that?
So, that's just something, the Board of Directors are having their first meeting that month, or that, that day. That's something that I'm just going to on my own accord. When the president of the association invites me to come, I'll show up.
I know, but I missed it. The Board of Directors of Municipal Clerks?
For the North Carolina Association of Municipal Clerks.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for the clarification.
And that's it. Any questions?
And that's on a Friday, Robbie?
Yes, sir. Just to note, town hall is, is closed.
Yeah.
Yeah, I won't, shouldn't disrupt anything here.
Correct. Mr. Rigsby, do you have anything to report on the property committee?
I do not, not this time. I did ask that Mr. Wagner ordered some signs consistent with our recent change in the hours, so he was going to reach out to...
Signs and trophies in Madison.
Madison.
Yep.
To do that.
So we're working on that. We have three signs that need to be replaced, and so those are the three signs that will replace. We're fortunate that the rules and regulations signs that were installed on the courts are, they already pretty much entail that.
Okay, great.
We're good.
Town Park Improvement Committee, Mr. T. Stevenson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, folks. Please report that after several attempts, we have received now, Mr. Wagner has received six proposals from lighting contractors for our project to light the soccer fields. Mayor Pro Tim Foy will conduct a discussion a little bit further in tonight's agenda on item fifteen with more details about that. We're continuing to discuss with our current vendor, the security options for adding some additional cameras around the courts, the basketball and pickleball courts. That's kind of slow-going. There's questionable availability about what we would like to have, and I'm just trying to locate that information in those, those different components. As I mentioned last month, we have received two proposals from local paving contractors to add additional parking close to the courts. Right now, it's on the opposite side from the courts. We will be discussing those in greater detail at our next meeting of the park committee. We did obtain several quotes from the current landscape contractor to do various service items that were outside the, the terms of their current agreement with us, and we are in the process now of discussing those, prioritizing those, and determining which ones we want to bring forward and recommend to council for funding with that. Again, the Park Improvement Committee will hold the next meeting on Thursday, September the nineteenth, that would be a week from today, in this room at five fifteen. It is, as usual, open to the public, and everyone that would so desire is welcome to attend. Have any questions, comments, criticisms? Hold your criticism.
Hey, thanks for going down and putting that trashcan top on.
Just, you know, something anybody could do, Jimmy.
I know, but I appreciate you doing it.
Hopefully, it saved us some money, so.
Yeah.
It's a, it's kind of a temporary fix, because the door doesn't close entirely, and we're concerned with water accumulating in there. So we may need to replace it anyway, but at least it's a stopgap with the weather predicted to be rainy over the weekend.
Probably, probably spring on it. Might be able to just replace the spring.
Maybe so.
But it needs to be taken off and pressure washed, but, but right now, it's going to do the purpose of it. Thank you for doing it.
The spring is broken. I was going to take it off and adjust the spring, but the spring is broken in there, so we'll need to replace that.
Probably find a spring for it.
Any other comments?
What was it, four hundred and fifty dollars? How much was it to replace that?
We got them down to two hundred and seventy-eight.
Oh, really?
Yep. Well, that's because I'm going to put the new one on, too.
That's, that's...
And pick it up at the distributor.
That's a long way down.
That's still a lot of money for a top. But, but that's okay, but thank you.
We actually have an option from Home Depot as well, that's even a little bit less, but it doesn't match. It's a black top as compared to a green top, but it's functional.
That's right.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Thank you, folks.
Outstanding, T. Thank you very much. Financial reports. This is our financial officer, budget director, Kimberly Thacker.
Good evening, folks. I hope everyone's good tonight. Okay, we will start with the town of, the town of Stokesdale, the general fund. How about that? So, with the Bank of Oak Ridge for our SEDARs, our total is two million, seven hundred, sixteen thousand, seven hundred forty-eight dollars and seventeen cent. The total of all of our bank accounts that includes SEDARs, our savings, and, and all of our accounts for the general fund total three million, five hundred, twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred twenty-six dollars and fifty cents. Our total accounts receivable for the month of August is twelve thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and thirty-six cents. And of that includes our August shared overhead reimbursement back from the Water Enterprise account that totals eleven thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars and twelve cents for the month of August. Our total shared overhead year-to-date is twenty-six thousand, two hundred seventy-seven dollars and two cents. The total accounts payable for the general fund as of August thirty-first is nineteen thousand, eight hundred forty-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents. Our total interest received for the general fund year-to-date is eighteen thousand, one hundred eighty-four dollars and seventeen cents. For the month of August is nine thousand, one hundred six dollars and forty-seven cents. Also, for the state retirement that the town of Stokesdale contributes for the full-time employees, the total year-to-date is two thousand, eight hundred thirty-six dollars and thirty-two cents. And for the month of August is fourteen hundred, nineteen dollars and sixty-two cents. That's all I have for the general fund. I'll move to the Water Enterprise account. For the Water Enterprise account, for our SEDARs, the total at the Bank of Oak Ridge is five hundred, thirty thousand, eight hundred sixty dollars and twenty-three cents. Our total bank accounts for the Water Fund, Water Enterprise Fund totals two million, six hundred forty-two thousand, one hundred sixty-three dollars and eighty-seven cents. The accounts receivable for the month of August, this also includes our August billing, is thirty-seven thousand, fifty-four dollars and seventy-seven cents. Our total accounts payable, which includes the Water Enterprise reimbursement back to the general fund, that, that total include, this total includes that amount, is ninety-nine thousand, one hundred forty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. The interest year-to-date for the Water Enterprise account is eight thousand, eight hundred seventy-two dollars and twenty cents, of which August interest was four thousand, four hundred forty-four dollars and fifty-two cents. The total capacity fees year-to-date is four thousand, five hundred dollars. And the month of August, our total capacity fees collected was three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. And that's all that I have for the Water Enterprise account, unless anyone has any
Thank you. At this time, we'll take public comments from the floor. I have Mr. Kyle Stalls. Mr. Stalls, if you would, introduce yourself and your address.
Hi, my name is Kyle Stalls, seven-eight-two-three, Wilson Farm Road in Summerfield. And I'm not a part of Summerfield's leadership, but I am here with their, you know, blessing. And my purpose is just to offer an in-person and public thank you to the town of Stokesdale for the resolution supporting us that was issued last year while we were in the midst of our struggle against the annexation. We reached out to towns across the state. A handful of them were willing to publicly support us. A few more were willing to call us and say, we're there with you, but, you know, we're not going to say anything in, on the news. And there were a lot that just chose to stay silent. So it did take quite a bit of backbone to stand behind us, and we are very, very appreciative of that. And I know thank you letters have been sent, our council has issued statements, but we felt like it was just important to, you know, come do it in person. And I will say, I was involved with lobbying on behalf of our town against the de-annexation. I spent a lot of my personal time in Raleigh, sitting down with legislators, talking through the issues. And while I met quite a few really good folks, folks who were willing to hear things out and be thoughtful and far-sighted, I also met quite a few for whom local government is a problem to be dealt with. It's an issue to be navigated, was the general tenor of our, sometimes very long conversations. It's amazing, I can just kind of walk in and talk to folks. I didn't know you could do that in Raleigh. But I guess when you're talking about a controversial issue, they'll, they'll give you the time of day. Some of them will, some of them won't. But if anybody here is interested in learning more about it, I did put my contact information on the card. I can kind of give you a firsthand account of what it was like. It was a very interesting experience. And also, any of our leadership that helped with the matter. I think it would be worthwhile to speak to them, you know, and get their assessment of what the process was like, because I think we're going to see quite a bit more of this in the future. But that's neither here nor there right now. Just thank you from me and everyone I've talked to around town. We all really appreciate it, and it's recognized. So, thank you.
Mr. Stalls?
Yes, sir.
And you're welcome. How many towns publicly supported Summerfield against the de-annexation?
I believe we had ten to eleven issued statements. And we heard from, it's hard to say, maybe two or three more that were willing, mayors that were willing to call and say, hey, we think this is bad, but they never issued any sort of public statement.
I, for one, would be interested in having a one-on-one exchange with you, preferably in person, but could use a telephone at a later date.
Okay.
I have been watching that carefully from, from, from our vantage point over here. It just feels like a rich man was able to do anything he wanted to do while the average citizen is often constrained severely by the local government and a lot of regulations. So it, and it's, and it's nothing specific against Mr. Couch.
Yeah.
It's, it's not his fault. The legislature let him do this, I'll make that clear. But it, it does cause us concern when we're basically taking an action that might bring a reprisal by Senator Berger, since he's, you know, the mayor pro temp in the Senate and a very powerful representative in our state. So, you know, we appreciate the recognition and, and it, it was something, you know, we did think about those, that situation, but at some point, if, if you don't stand up for your neighbor when they're being put upon, who's going to stand up for you when it comes to your doorstep?
Yes, absolutely. So that's why we're trying to get in front of the towns that did support us. And, you know, it was a fight that many of us, deep down, knew we were going to lose, but that's no reason not to fight. It's the way I think about things. So, but yes, I'd love to have a, you know, one-on-one. So, it was an interesting experience. But thank you again. I really appreciate it, guys.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Maria Adams. Ms. Adams, if you would identify yourself with your address.
Good evening. My name is Maria Adams, and I'm your neighbor in the town of Summerfield, fifty-nine ninety-nine Morganshire Drive. Thank you so much for the opportunity to address the council this evening. Constitution Week is recognized for next week. Constitution Day is, I think, the seventeenth. So I brought you another supply of free Constitution guides. I saw that Councilman Jones has got his personal copy with him, and if you run out and want more, you know who to call. "We must ensure that the values and principles we hold so dearly are preserved for generations to come. The United States Constitution is the bedrock upon which our nation was built, and it sets us apart from every other nation on earth. In a constitutional republic, we exercise our right to elect officials who serve as our representatives rather than rulers. Through the process of elections, citizens hire officials at the local, county, state, and national levels to work on their behalf. Elected officials are accountable to the people they represent, and their primary responsibility is to serve the interests and the needs of the public. There's an upcoming election, as you very well know, in November, for the District Three School Board seat. The three candidates in the running include the incumbent school board member, Mr. Michael Logan, who is a conservative Republican, and the other two candidates are liberals, with one being a Democrat, David Coates, and the other being a Democrat-turned-unaffiliated, Bill Goble. Our community's children are the most vulnerable members of our society, deserving of our utmost protection, and we must carefully consider who we entrust with their well-being and education. It's imperative to vote wisely, so I'd like to share some insight on each of these candidates. I've been highly impressed by Mr. Michael Logan, our current school board representative, who has truly exemplified outstanding service leadership. Since assuming the position on the school board earlier this year, Mr. Logan has consistently demonstrated responsiveness, transparency, and a strong presence in our community. He has been actively involved in various district events, including festivals, PTA meetings, football games, graduation ceremonies, and town meetings. Additionally, I have personally witnessed Mr. Logan addressing a wide range of parent concerns, offering prompt and effective solutions. Following his early retirement from a twenty-six-year teaching career with Guilford County Schools, Mr. Logan has dedicated himself fully to his role as a public school representative. Democrat Mr. Coates appears to be a pleasant individual, but he lacks the depth of insight exhibited by Mr. Logan regarding the operations of Guilford County Schools from the classroom to the boardroom. Furthermore, Mr. Coates is not actively connected with our community, leaving us uncertain about his identity and values. Bill Goble, the unaffiliated candidate, initially was a Republican, and later a Democrat, while misleading voters by claiming to be unaffiliated when collecting signatures for his petition. If you remember, Goble betrayed our community when he manipulated his way onto the school board. He publicly admitted to a secret meeting with the board chair and the board attorney to steal the seat from the Republican Party. It required legislative intervention to remove Goble and rightfully install Mr. Logan. Goble's reluctance to give up the seat resulted in additional financial burdens on taxpayers due to legal expenses. Upon Goble's exit, he stated in an interview with the Greensboro News &amp; Record, quote, "I feel that I'm better suited to be on the school board than someone who knows how to change tires," said Goble, referring to Logan's background as an automotive instructor. Goble not only disparaged Mr. Logan's expertise as a master automotive technician, but he also showed disrespect for every person who is currently in or pursuing a career in the automotive industry and beyond. Recently, there was an attempt to interfere with the election process when Goble contacted the Democrat candidate, Mr. Coates, urging him to drop out of the race in order to clear the path for himself. When Mr. Coates refused, a member of Goble's team reached out to the Democratic Party, asking them to pressure Mr. Coates to quit. So as a parent of a GCS student, I highly recommend voting for Michael Logan. He is an experienced educator who embodies trustworthiness, ethics, and morality, making him an excellent choice for decision-making on policies that directly impact our children's education. And I sincerely hope that the Stokesdale community will take the time to thoroughly research the candidates and make well-informed decisions when it's time to cast their votes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
So you don't like tire changes?
Molly, I'm not sure you need to introduce yourself, but please, if you would, with your address.
Good evening. My name is Molly Byrd. My address is 8300 Wright's Farm Lane in Summerfield. That's unincorporated Summerfield. But I'm here today to just let you know that we're only three weeks away from our Farmer's Day, which is October the fifth, up here at Stokesdale United Methodist Church. We've had posters around town, if you've seen them. If not, check our Facebook page. We're going to be having a car show, not necessarily a car show, but antique cars, anything over thirty years. We're inviting anyone and everyone to bring their vehicles. We're going to have, hopefully, we're going to have a lot of farm equipment there. I don't know how much. I've signed up for every Facebook page there is out there to bring your equipment, and we will have vendors. We've got at least twenty vendors that are coming that day. We're going to have free games for children and adults alike, so it's a free community event that we put on. This is our third year, and hopefully, in maybe another couple of years, we'll get better at it or we kind of perfect it. But it's from ten to four at Stokesdale United Methodist Church. We will have other exhibits. We will have our Mr. and Ms. Farmer's Day contest again this year. We need children. We will have an silent auction. So check us out on our Facebook page, Friends of Stokesdale's Facebook page. You can keep up with all the details. There's an update at least every other day. I try to, I try to keep it down to two or three times a week, but sometimes I just can't resist. But I hope you all will come and join us and have fun and join the community, and that's what we want to do. We want to have a fun day. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
October fifth?
I'm sorry, what?
The date is what again?
October fifth.
Okay. Just make that clear.
I have a poster. Would you like me to give you this one? I know Robbie's got one out there at the front desk.
Yeah, I've got one out there.
Okay.
I'll take a look at that one. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Molly.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we go to new business. Consideration of cost proposals for Ellisboro Road waterline extension project. Our Mayor Pro Tem, Derek Ford, brought this agenda item to us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a brief backstory on this. The location of this waterline extension would be on Ellisboro Road, right in front of the new byright, and that would connect to the new subdivision off Ellisboro at Cornelius Court. It's roughly a quarter of a mile. I'm very grateful that Mr. Tim Kinnonley of Kinnonley Engineering is here tonight. I'm grateful for the good work that they've done and that he is here to share his recommendations on the bid that he's received and also answer any questions council may have about the project. So, Mr. Kinnonley, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, or Town Council. We took bids on this project last Thursday, September fifth, and we only had two bidders. We had sent it out to approximately five contractors, and since this is an informal bid, it was going to be less than five hundred thousand dollars. We didn't have to have public bid opening. But we got two bids. Contractors were Yates Construction of Stokesdale and Baker Underground of Kernersville. And Yates Construction's price for the project was a hundred ninety-four thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars, and Baker Underground was two hundred ninety-six thousand. It's our recommendation to the town council to accept Yates' contract and move forward with it, and if you guys have any questions.
Mr. Kinnonley, is there any difference in the pipe or anything? What, I mean, there's a big difference in the price? Is, or something?
I can't answer that question. The pricing should be in your package, the unit cost analysis. Let's see, the water line, there was a thirty-dollar difference in the cost of the water line between the two contractors per foot. So that's where most of the money is at. I do not know, I cannot answer the question of why it's that much difference.
I mean, it's not a whole lot that could be. I mean, just others, I mean, they're laying pipe, so.
Well, yes, that's true, but that's, I've seen it over the last couple of years, it's all over the place.
Yeah. I know Yates will do a good job, but just, I just, that's a big, that's a big difference. But I'm glad to go with your recommendation.
I've got a few questions, if you'd like.
Yeah, yeah. Is this two thousand, one hundred and forty feet total, or should I add the other thirty feet for PC 350 water line? Could you explain those two items to me?
The number, item number four is an eight-inch diameter PVC C900 water line. That is a plastic PVC water line. The eight-inch diameter RJ DIP pipe is a restrained joint ductile iron pipe that will have to go under the road crossing, in the casing.
Okay, NC DOT requires it to be encased, and then the ductile iron requirement, is that the town of Stokesdale requirement or NC DOT is required?
That's NC DOT.
Okay. Well, then, to get the total number of feet, I'd add the twenty-one, forty-two, and thirty feet, which would be twenty-one, seventy, of course. Correct.
Correct. And those numbers are rounded up a little bit because of just making round numbers.
In regards to NC DOT, how have you interfaced with NC DOT regarding the pending improvements to that road intersection at Ellisboro and NC 65?
We filed an encroachment permit with NC DOT for the water line because it's in their, in their right-of-way, or at the back of their right-of-way, and where it crosses underneath where we're going to have to bore under the road. They have not said anything to us, to my knowledge, that I remember, about the intersection.
Okay, this is not the first time I've raised the issue, but if any, if this water main's installed and then subsequently has to be relocated because of the improvements to that intersection, or the sleeve extended, or the ductile iron extended, who pays for that?
I would say it would be the town of Stokesdale, because if it's, you're allowed to be in there right-of-way.
So shouldn't we make sure that, for sure, that we're not putting something in their way that we're going to have to pay for and relocate? Have we taken all the steps that we can possibly take to prevent the Town of Stokesdale Water Enterprise Fund from having to pay again for that install under the road?
We can go back and check with the reviewer that issued the permit for the encroachment to make sure that they have no issue with it for the future. That's no problem. Because the encroachment permit was issued a year and a half, two years ago.
Okay, those, you are aware that there, there's heavy discussion about our big traffic circle and our major intersection improvements there, correct, by NC DOT?
Not, I am not aware of it, but now I am.
I've got a question. How far does that water line, does the water line go on Ellisboro at all? Like in front of the byright?
Trying to remember. I did not bring a set of plans with me, so.
Okay.
Now, where you're going under the road will be up on Ellisboro Road, going across, going across to the development, is that right?
Yes.
You're not going, the pipe's already there, under the intersection of 65 and Ellisboro Road?
Yes.
It runs out?
Okay. We're only having, we only cross the road once.
Yeah, and that's, that's, that's not going to have anything to do with it.
So basically, our main already extends past the intersection. It's on the north side of Ellisboro Road and on the west side of the intersection, correct? And you're talking about having to bore under Ellisboro to get on to the south side of Ellisboro?
Yes, the road, the line has to cross the road.
Yeah, 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 I'm just, and so, we have those plans in the building already?
Yes, you do. Yes.
Seems like I have seen them.
Yeah.
And so I'd hate to think that we'd have to rework all this when we just could have added ten foot to one end or the other and been okay. I mean, that's not the way we need to spend the town's money.
Well, are you, what are you talking about with the?
Well, there's a tentative plan to significantly flare Ellisboro Road on the west side of that intersection. So if you're boring underneath it, if the expansion of the roadway gets over on that bore where you have the ductile iron and starts to fill, fill in on to the PVC, won't it have to be changed?
That, we'd have to check with DOT on what they would do.
Well, what?
They're not boring under the road at the intersection.
I understand that, but there's one plan I've seen that removes, forgive me, I don't know who owns it now, but Stokesdale Electric, the building they used to be in, that building would be entirely removed. So the road is being widened on that side of the road. And I'm not saying there's a problem. I want to avoid a problem. I don't want the town to have to come back and spend thirty thousand dollars when we could have just fixed it the first time.
Yeah, the water line's on the other side of the road. The water line's not on the side.
Probably in the mass. I understand, but the bore is coming over on to that side of the, the south side of the road.
Are you gonna, are you going, are you going up? Are you going to bore under right there, or are you going to bore up, you're going to go up the road and then bore under near the development?
The bore is not at the intersection with 65.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, it's not. It's up the road.
It's all the way up to where the development's at?
Yes.
So there's no construction going to be going on right there? I mean, I guess it could forelane as far as that goes.
I'm not saying there's a problem. I'm just saying that we should be sure that we're coordinating with NC DOT to get the best possible fit for this before, you know, we have a problem, we have to pay for versus somebody else.
No, I agree with you on that. I'm just telling you that the water line's not on the side of the road where you're talking about taking the buildings down. It's on the side of the road to byright, and he's going to run the plans, run the road up to that development and then go under the road.
The bore's on the Gidding Grove Church end of the project, is what you're telling me?
Yeah, up there.
Yeah, yeah.
Forty miles, whatever it is.
It still doesn't necessarily alleviate my concern about NC DOT, if you understand, Mr. Kinnonley.
I think so. I mean, we'll check with them to make sure. But if the water line where we're connecting at the end, at Ellisboro and 65, if that area, if that widening is going to happen there, or where the roundabout is going at the byright, wherever that is, that's going to be an issue. That could be an issue anyway, if you're inside there right-of-way.
Right.
And that may not be, you may have to, we have it in the, you have a unit price contract, you could add some linear feet to the contract to change it.
I got you. I guess I need your help here. What questions should a prudent council member be asking about this when we know there's a NC DOT project being planned at, you know, for that whole intersection and the approaches there, too?
Well, like I said, we will go back to DOT and check with them to make sure there is no issue.
Yeah, well, since it's not coming out of their pocket, I'm concerned about how much review we would get with them, but just do the best you can for us. We don't want to have to pay twice for anything.
We will check with DOT, and when they reviewed it, if they had any, if they had any issue with it, they should have stated something at that time. Because most DOT projects are seven years from the time they're started to the time you put a shovel in the ground.
Yeah, yeah, the issue here is they're, they're working on what I would call a preliminary plan. Nothing is gelled yet. There's no, they've been doing a lot of surveying all over that area, and we don't know what they're going to do exactly yet. And so, trying to stay out of their way with this water main.
So currently, there's a, there's a water main in front of byright?
Correct.
North side of Ellisboro Road?
Correct.
Do you know about where that, the terminus of that water main is?
Roughly, I think I do.
Can you, can you share?
I think it'd be just about in front of the gate that goes into the former Stokesdale Electric facility there.
It's north of, it's, uh...
So I think, I think...
It's north of the parking lot.
It's south of the parking lot, but I think what Mr. Kinnonley is saying is that part that's already there is more likely to be impacted by the DOT project that you're referencing than this extension would be.
I agree with that statement.
Okay, cool.
But I'm just saying, if there's any possibility of NC DOT getting out, way out there towards Gidding Grove Church Road, then we need to pay attention and make provision for it if it has to be relocated at the Town of Stokesdale's expense.
No, I mean, you bring up, you bring up good points, because that project is going to happen. When, I don't know. We don't even know if it's going to be a circle, excuse me, a roundabout, or if it's going to be just widening of 65 there.
One thing I would, I would add at this point, I guess if the town council elects to go with the Yates Construction proposal, then the next step would be a contract, which I think would give us another opportunity to make sure that it's like you want it before we actually sign a contract at some point.
Okay.
In regards to us having to pay to relocate a water main or what have you, Mr. Winfrey, based on previous limited experience at the council here, I think there's a state law that kicks in that has to do with our population as to whether or not we have to relocate such things. Can you share, illuminate me in any way about that?
No, I'm not, I'm not trying to understand the question.
Like, if your population is two thousand versus five thousand versus twelve thousand, that governs whether or not the local municipality has to relocate the owned utilities by that municipality. That's, I'm stretching my memory here, but...
I don't know the answer to that question. I'd have to look into that.
Good. So the benefits the town would expect to receive from laying this water line are improved fire flow at some hydrants on Deer Path Court, I believe, beyond the subdivision, some hydrants that were identified back in the Hazen and Sawyer study from 2020. So we would expect to see improvement there, as well as weaker wa, you know, perceived weaker water flow in the new subdivision. And secondly, it would be just connecting two terminating points of the water system, which obviously is better for age of water, just the health of the overall water system. The study did recommend where, you know, where practical to connect terminating points, and I think this is a good solution for both issues that were conveyed to us in the study. So I realize that comment may not be applicable to your concerns, but I did, I did want to say what the benefit of this would be.
That's why we started it.
That's correct.
You know, we wouldn't have done it if it, if it wasn't for that benefit.
Correct.
You know, for example, we just, council is aware of this, but not be aware of exactly what happened. We just had to have Yates Construction cut down through NC 68 to perform a repair. The Town of Stokesdale didn't put our water main underneath the pavement. NC DOT widened the road there. As a result of that, you know, we had increased vibration that may or may not contributed to the problem, but it certainly increased our repair cost.
It did. It did.
And so, it's one thing I can tell you from experience down here is that we need to avoid having our water mains underneath pavement. It's a very expensive operation when we have to do that, plus it becomes a safety issue, of course, depending on the, on the traffic. And so, it just doesn't make sense that we don't... And so, it just doesn't make sense that we don't ask NC DOT to look at that from a perspective of, you know, any conflicts with our, our water main, if they're willing to do so. And Mr. Kinnonley's willing to do a follow-up, that'd be great.
Yes.
Mr. Jones, if I could interrupt for a second, that, uh, statute is one thirty-six dash twenty-seven point one, and it's fifty-five hundred is the, uh, the number we're looking at, fifty-five hundred, uh, residents that the DOT, um, anything under that DOT is required to pay for the relocation.
Well, M- Mr. Riggsby, if you ever get out of the council seat, you'd make an excellent town clerk, one, one, one thirty-six, what?
Dash twenty-seven point one.
What's that got to do with being a town clerk?
I, I guarantee I work on Fridays.
I would too, if y'all told me to.
It might be closed. All right, you're a good man, I will take a look at that.
So, I thi- I think your concerns are well-founded, but with this project, you know, the existing infrastructure could be affected, you know, I, I'm not so sure if the new, this new water line would be impacted.
Well, I think both statements could be made.
All right.
Well, according to my math, that puts this project at about eighty-nine dollars and seventy cents a foot, you know, accessories included, fire hydrants and such.
Wonderful, uh, I'd like to read the recommendation letter into the minutes, please.
Mr. Foy, just one more question, if you'd bear with me.
No, please.
The timing of this is such that this is gonna throw us into the winter possibly performing this project. If I had my personal preference, that wouldn't happen, we would not be out there digging on the side of the road in December, January, in, in all the mud and, you know, the rain and, you know, that sort of thing. Is there any way we can defer this to, to better weather, uh, to benefit, to the benefit of everybody, uh? Any suggestions?
The project, the contract is, uh, for a year, so we were anticipating the possibility of having to go through a winter.
So, so it would be at the contractor's option to when they start and so forth?
Yes, and when you, and also with input from, from the council. If you don't want them to start until March, we would not issue a notice to proceed, an NTP till March. Is there a downside to doing this in the winter? Not really, you're digging a small trench, it's not like you're trying to grade a roadway. It's a utility contract, uh, it is beside the road, but as long as you can get compaction, it's a small trench, it's gonna be about a three-foot, four-foot trench, shallow.
If, if we did the contract and then held off to the summer and the prices went up on pipe, what would, what would happen there, would we still, uh, would the company still be obligated under the contract?
Yeah, we would have to, I believe we would have to get a letter from them that they would hold their prices.
Right, but that's not in the contract one way or the other?
N- I don't believe so.
Right.
Usually they, right now with the price of everything, it's fluctuating so much.
That's what I'm afraid of. It might be my, like our property taxes, go up fifty percent or something.
Right, which has happened.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'll stand by my concern about the matter.
Well, I understand your concern. I don't think they'd go out there and start laying pipes if they didn't think it could get it in.
Mr. Foy? Yeah, I'd like to, just to read the recommendation into the record. Uh, Mr. Wagner, as you know, on Thursday, September fifth, twenty twenty-four, two contractors submitted bids to the town of Stokesdale, Ellisboro Road Water Line Extension bid, bids were received at the Stokesdale Town Hall for the base bid. The base bids range from a low of one hundred and ninety-four thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars by Yates Construction of Stokesdale, North Carolina, to a high of two hundred and ninety-six thousand by Baker Underground of Cunnersville, North Carolina. Based on our review of the bids, it is our recommendation that an award of construction contract be made to Yates Construction Incorporated in the amount of one hundred and ninety-four thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars contingent upon review and approval by the Stokesdale Town Council. So, thank you for that, and, and, Mr. Wagner, if you could include the recommendation in this set of minutes.
Absolutely.
I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that we accept Kinnonley Engineering and Designs' recommendation, uh, to award the contract to Yates Construction Company in the amount of one hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars, one hundred and ninety-four thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars for the Ellisboro Water Line Extension, and that those funds should come from the ARPA grant received from Guilford County.
Second. Mr. Wa- Mr. Foy?
Yes, sir.
As a matter of a suggestion, this is a big chunk of money, uh, pre-audit certification being what it is, I think the, the data, the quote from Yates or, or any identifying information on that actual, uh, quotation from Yates should be identified for the record, just a suggestion.
W- w- what I'll do is I'll reckon, I'll reference the date from Kinnonley Engineering, September ninth of twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, but the check has to be written to Yates Construction. If Ms. Thacker's happy with that, then I'll, you know, no problem on my end.
The bid was provided on September fifth, and he references that in his letter on September fifth, two contractors submitted bids, so, I guess it was the bid submitted September fifth and dated September fifth.
Right, the date it was opened.
Yes, sir.
And.
Ms. Thacker, is that sufficient for a pre-audit certification?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
And I've also requested that this be included in the minutes, the recommendation letter.
Absolutely.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Foy, would you want to, um, include directions that we begin drafting a contract, I guess, between the town of Stokesdale and Yates?
I would.
Uh, so, maybe be presented at the next meeting if, if we can get it nailed down.
Okay. There is a.
Yeah, so you wanna just.
Contract in the, the project manual. Right. And we can proceed if you guys pass it, we can proceed with getting a contract set up, numbers filled in, and it'll go to Yates first for their signature and then be brought to the town council, to Robbie. I, I, I think that's good, I would like to, uh, for, share that with Robbie, and then Robbie would get it to our attorney, just, uh, just to review. But, but, but that sounds good, and if Chuck, you see any concerns along the way, just please voice those.
Okay.
So, so, Mr. Foy, am I voting to spend the money or am I voting to pursue a contract? And I'll be voting at a later date to, um, enter into a contract with Yates and spend this amount of money.
I believe we're voting for both.
Mr. Winfrey, can, can, can?
Yeah.
I'm confused, can you?
Yeah, I guess my understanding was there's gonna be a contract later to be nailed down, I don't know, we haven't, I haven't seen the contract, maybe there's.
Yeah, so, um, so I, I think I may can answer your question, I think right now what you're doing is awarding the bid to Yates Construction based off of their, their bid rate, and then you're also allowing work on a, on a contract with Yates and the town that will then come back to council, and that will be the final contract, you guys will vote to approve the contract, and I would add to that, give the mayor authority to sign it on behalf of the council, and then from that point, you'll start with the project. Um, I do have the project manual, uh, that's something I've shared with everybody, it's a large document, uh, but the contract is in there, it's just basically blank right now except for the, you know, the, the, the information, so, it'll be filled, I guess, will you, you all be the one filling it out? Okay, putting Yates' information and all that, yeah, just when you get it filled out, you can email it to me and I'll send it over to Chuck, and we'll go from there.
Okay. The one thing I'd like to add to my motion is to authorize Mayor Crawford to sign the contract upon Chuck's.
A- upon approval?
Yeah.
Upon approval either to council or upon my?
Council.
Okay.
No?
Well, I was gonna suggest upon Chuck's approval.
So, it's not coming back in front of the council then?
Wha- what's more appropriate?
Well, I guess what I've usually seen is that you, you accept the bid, we then do a contract, and the contract comes back to the town, town council for execution, you get a chance to review it before it gets signed, and then we can proceed with it.
Mr. Foy, I won't vote for a contract I can't read before it's written.
Okay.
Not with a number this large.
Yeah, and I, I'm fine e- e- either way, I just.
Well, I mean, yeah, but Mr. Winfrey hasn't weighed in on any of this yet.
Well, I, I think, you know, my expectation is there'll be a contract that's gonna be, you know, we'll start with what they've provided, I haven't seen that contract, so, assuming it's an order, then I would review it, and then at your next meeting, I would anticipate having a contract for you to review ahead of time, and then either pass or not agree to.
Cause we're trying to get this as quick as possible, so we'll have time to read it, so we don't have to put it off.
Absolutely, I've already sent it to you, but I'd be glad to highlight that section and send it to you.
It's not.
It's not filled out yet, correct, that's right, it's not been filled out yet, and, and, and only because we didn't know who was gonna bid on it, who was not gonna bid on it.
Just try to get it.
Yeah, I understand.
Together, and, and I hope we got plenty of time, a week, so, maybe.
Yeah, understood. Sounds good.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll return on the motion.
Yes.
Okay, very good, any further discussion?
I'd like to have the clerk restate the motion.
Mayor Pro Tim Foy has made a motion to accept Kinnonley Engineering's recommendation and to award a construction contract to Yates Construction Company in the amount of one hundred and ninety-four thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars contingent upon review and approval by the Stokesdale Town Council. This is to be paid using ARPA funds from the Guilford County ARPA grant.
Can we add review and approval of the Stokesdale Town Council to this, Mr. Foy?
W- we did, I mean, I think Robbie said contingent upon, what was the exact words?
Contingent upon review and approval by the Stokesdale Town Council.
I don't think he said, well, if you said approval, I missed it, young man, so I apologize.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? Mr. Riggsby?
Aye.
Mr. Foy?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I am also aye. Next item is consideration of cost proposal for water service line field investigation and investigations. Uh, this is Mr. Jones.
It is. Okay, Mr. Mayor, you and I met, and along with, uh, Mr. Wagner, met with representatives of Hazen and Sawyer?
Yes.
Well, let's hold on while they finish their meeting. And so, uh, as a result of that, you know, we're engaged in a, in a requirement from higher government that came down from the EPA to do a water and copper study, uh, we've been through this process, we've paid Hazen and Sawyer to, to handle this for us. Uh, the, the long and the short of it is, they have found a provision in the law that allows us to spot check forty of our metered connections, and the purpose of that is to ascertain what type of piping the customer has attached to our meter yoke, and we have to pay somebody to go out and perform this function to interface with our, uh, town, with Hazen and Sawyer and our town staff. Uh, this is a requirement, we gotta do it, and we're also have a deadline coming up on us. We have, uh, we have obtained two quotes for this, one from A and D Enterprises for a total of seven thousand, four hundred dollars, and another one from, uh, I know it's in.
Pilot Civil.
Yeah, 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 I know it's in here.
Pilot Civil LLC.
Okay, and so, that being the case, uh.
And that one is for thirty-eight hundred, forty dollars.
Thank you, and so, that the answer to this would seem obvious to, to hire the, uh, cheaper bidder, which is Pilot Civil LLC, three thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. Uh, as I understand it, these folks were recommended by another, uh, vendor that's done work for the town in the past, Sandy Klein, that I had asked Mr. Wagner to contact, I, I, you know, I don't know anything about Pilot Civil LLC, but, uh, there's a email that we have here dated September the tenth, two thousand, twenty-four, that, uh, explains their qualifications, and, uh, it looks okay to me, uh, you know, pending the receipt of their proper insurance certificate verifying that they have proper insurance.
And they have provided that, and they've also filled out a, a vendor form.
Okay.
And they also said they could complete the project by the, you don't take, right?
Yes, yeah, complete the project, uh, by the last week of September, and, uh, Kyle Poehl, uh, with Hazen and Sawyer, just stressed the importance of that because, um, if you get it done by the end of September, that gives them some time to put those reports together, send it to NCDEQ, and if we do not meet that October sixteenth deadline, then you'll be sending out roughly two hundred letters.
Yeah, and Tim, thanks for, uh, pushing this forward for us, and Robbie for getting this quote, I know Tim asked you to do that. If, uh, he hadn't have done that, we might've slipped up there.
Well, Mr. Wagner, one question to, the quote from A and D Enterprises, has it been shared with Hazen and Sawyer prior to obtaining this quote from, Pilot Civil LLC?
I don't believe so.
Has it, has it been shared with anyone outside of staff and town council?
No, no, it was sent directly to me, um, I think that, uh, Mr. Hodges may have discussed his price with, um, Hazen, or at least what he was thinking of pricing it, cause Kyle is the one that actually reached out and, and requested this. But, um, the quote itself was sent to me, and it's, it's sat in my, uh, server until I printed it in your packet.
Okay.
Well, if he happened to know it, he didn't bid very well.
Point.
If he, he got inside information, he.
Your point taken.
He didn't use it very well, did he? That's a big difference.
That, that, that's, that's, yeah, exactly, that's a big difference for the same, same work, assuming the scope is the same.
And I did, um, the scope of work that Kyle presented, I basically copied and pasted, sent the exact same scope of work to, uh, to Mr. Klein, and who then shared it with his, uh, this, uh, Mr. Covington.
Do we know if these meters, these meter boxes will be geolocated?
Hmm, let me look at the scope of work here and see, I don't have an answer, um. I'm not sure, it's not listed in the scope of work that Hazen and Sawyer has provided.
Was it listed with A and D? Where they gonna geolocate?
I, I do not know, uh, if it's, if the scope of work was put out there by, uh, Hazen and Sawyer, then they were both looking at the same information, so, hopefully not, I just, we're, we're trying to get to the point where we're, uh, geolocating the town's water system infrastructure to the, the point that it's, that's reasonable, and we have some grant monies that Hazen and Sawyer has indicated to me that can be spent for that purpose.
I don't know that they've necessarily stated, uh, geolocating in the, um, scope of work here, but I will add that there is a digital map that Hazen has provided that has all forty service locations outlined, and so, that's, um, that is, that is, uh, that is a locate of sorts.
Well, then I'll make a motion to the town of Stokesdale accept the proposal from Pilot Civil LLC detailed in an email to the town dated September the tenth, two thousand, twenty-four, in an amount not to exceed three thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars for the, uh, scope of work outlined by, um, Hazen and Sawyer. And I don't know, do we have a date on that scope of work? Yeah, it's not in our package, is it?
Now, you said they completed before September the twenty-seventh, correct?
Yes, that's right, that, that was in the scope of work, um, he said, so, in the scope of work, we've required it to be completed by September the twenty-seventh. Mr. Covington of Pilot Civil stated that he would have it done by September the twenty-fourth.
Yeah, I'll add that to my motion, that it must be completed by September the twenty-seventh.
Okay.
One second to motion. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Riggsby?
Aye.
Mr. Foy?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I am also aye. Our next item is consideration of cost proposal for temporary cleaning services during early voting period, this is also Mr. Jones.
Yeah, I did ask for that, um, it's, it's hard to know what the weather's going to be when with, uh, the early voting rolls around, I'm concerned that if it happens to be unusually wet, that we'll have a lot of feet coming through the front door and onto the carpet here. And the, uh, elections board does not, is not willing and does not pay for the use of our facility for, um, early voting. However, they will pay for, uh, in. However, they will pay for, uh, any extra maintenance costs, including cleaning. So to, to keep our town staff from having to clean up behind, uh, all the voters, uh, I think that we should go ahead and, and, and get ahead of this and pay our cleaner to take care of this. Thus the, uh, the memo that we have from town staff here. The only thing that I hadn't included here that I think we might want to make a provision for is maybe some, a couple of four-by-six mats. We may, I'd suggest maybe we purchase some at someplace like Home Depot, Lowe's, hardware store, et cetera. And have those available in case the, uh, floor becomes unusually wet. Uh, that, that foyer out there can be rather slick when it, when it gets wet, has been my experience, and we don't want anybody falling down. So, uh, that's where this came from. I, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, approve the contract for temporary clean, cleaning services as outlined in our memo from staff, uh, dated September tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. That will pay Ms. Brittany Willard to handle this for us at a cost of three hundred and fifty dollars as outlined in the, uh, in the email. Which I believe is cleaning every other day.
And just for record sake, she provided me with that quote. I know it's not listed on here, but that was provided to me on August the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four.
Uh, reference the quote provided to the town on August twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four.
I'll second the motion.
Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Jones, was it your intention that this be approved for reimbursement by the Board of, County Board of Elections also?
Yeah, I was gonna include that. Thank you, Mr. Winfrey. That's why you make the big bucks. Thank you. I, I wanna add that to my motion that we will bill the, uh, Guilford County Elections Board for this extra cleaning. And if we do purchase any, any, uh, floor mats for this, that they also be billed to the Elections Board.
Okay. Understood. I, I, I don't think that's too unreasonable. Kimberly Ellington, uh, who was over early voting, did, uh, basically say that, um, that they would try to help. Not that they would necessarily reimburse for use of the room, but, uh, any cost, uh, from cleaning. I know in Oak Ridge, they paid to have the carpets cleaned, so I think this is a pretty.
Agreed.
Similar.
Yeah, we, we've covered this in some emails that Mr. Wagner and I have been reporting to with the Elections Board.
Do you accept?
Foy, you still hold your second?
I do. Thank you.
Okay. Further discussion? Mr. Rigsby?
Aye.
Mr. Foy?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
And I am also aye. Consideration of, now, this is a discussion of the Athen Road, uh, Angel Purdue Road intersection as well as discussion of Stokesdale Elementary School traffic. This is, uh, Mr. Jones and our, uh, uh, Councilman Derek Foy.
Yeah, I'll go first. Uh, my latest and, and latest concern, I guess, among many, is that, uh, they recently, NCDOT recently had the road repaved and then they, they repainted the lines up at that intersection. And the yellow lines don't meet. And, uh, there's just no way to bend the vehicle, uh, to conform to what's marked on the pavement very easily. Yeah, I know it's there and it still kinda confuses my, my muscle memory or something, and I don't like it. So I, I think that we need to bring that to their attention and we have done so in emails to, uh, Wright Archer with NCDOT. I don't know ultimately what they'll do about it, but they have, uh, or he did rather responded that he was having staff look at it and should, should have us a response real soon. I'm concerned that, that, you know, uh, the traffic there at peak hours can be pretty bad, that somebody may turn in and that may contribute to an accident. And it, and it's just not right. Uh, we've taken pictures and sent to them. I don't know what the solution is, but it's just not right. Mr. Foy?
Well, I, I, I'm not gonna speak to the, to the lines, uh, but I know what you're talking about. Uh, I, I'm gonna speak to the, the school traffic and the car rider lines. I, I do realize that car rider lines are notoriously frustrating for, for parents and citizens alike. Uh, you know, the start of every school year. You know, it, it's, it's worse at the, you know, the beginning of the school year. I do acknowledge that. Moved here in twenty thirteen and I feel like, you know, it's, it's not unique to Stokesdale, that's for sure. Because I feel like every year, the Northwest Observer has some kind of article about the, what's, what goes on around Oak Ridge Elementary and how they have to snake the traffic around the subdivision there. And, uh, it's always good for a few gripes around the beginning of school from Oak Ridge citizens. And I think our citizens certainly, uh, share, uh, concerns of, you know, what's going on here in, in Stokesdale. It's, this issue is not new. I remember having a conversation with a colleague, uh, roughly twenty years ago, I worked with. And she was frustrated how she was late to work because of the traffic at Stokesdale Elementary School. So certainly this is not a new issue, uh, at the school. Uh, however, uh, in twenty, I believe it was in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, the traffic pattern, uh, was changed by the administration at the school to relieve, uh, to, to essentially shut down Water Tower Road. And, uh, so to relieve the traffic from piling up there on one fifty-eight and even extend into the one fifty-eight, highway sixty-eight intersection. That somewhat helped there, but the, 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 uh, traffic now backs up, uh, on Athens Road, uh, the Athens-Angel Purdue intersection. Uh, and there's, uh, I think the school has done, you know, everything they can to ask parents to, to, to enter the school traffic off Athens Road by the old car wash there. And that may have worked for the first week of school, uh, because the town did pay for a deputy in the mornings. But, uh, that's, that's come and gone. People will enter, uh, as, as they please. And, uh, it's, it's, it's kind of an uneasy situation there at pickup and drop-off hours. You know, I wanna commend my colleagues, uh, for reaching out to other government, uh, entities, the DOT, uh, and Guilford County Schools, as well as fielding, uh, questions and concerns from, from, from our citizens about the issue, uh, you know. Truth be told, there is little that the town can do. We do not own the roads. Uh, we certainly don't have the authority to tell the school system what to do. But I think what we can do is help facilitate, uh, conversations, uh, between the right folks. And that, the right folks will be Guilford County Schools and of course, the Department of Transportation. Uh, you know, for, for a long time, I think, uh, both entities kinda pointed each other, at each other, uh, instead of working together for a resolution. But, uh, you know, after, after speaking with, with senior leadership within both organizations, uh, I, I, I feel, I feel hopeful that, that a plan, uh, they're working on a plan now and it's gonna be in place. Uh, in fact, uh, the Assistant Superintendent, uh, uh, Mr. Mike Ritchie, uh, with, with Guilford County Schools, met with Tim and I, Mr. Michael Logan, uh, met with Tim and I on, on the Stokesdale Elementary Campus on, on the afternoon of, I believe it was August the thirtieth, uh, to discuss the issue, uh, in more depth. And certainly he did seem committed. I've had, uh, follow-up conversations about, uh, this issue with him. They seemed committed to working on a, a resolution, uh, to this problem. And certainly the DOT needs to be part of that. So, uh, I, I, in fact, Mr. Ritchie, uh, has offered to come to our November fourteenth meeting to give us and the citizens an update of, you know, kind of where they are from the school's perspective and their correspondence with, with the DOT on a possible solution, uh, there. What the solution is, I, I, I don't know. I did wanna show, uh, a graph, you know, I do like my data. Robbie, if you could pull that up. So, this is a graph of, can't really see it. The, the, the blue chart shows, shows enrollment history at Stokesdale Elementary. And if you see on there, there, there is a vast drop-off in twenty, well, twenty and the year twenty twenty-one. Two big drivers of that, uh, obviously COVID, but the second is the opening up of, of.
Revolution.
Revolution Academy. So, you know, the increase in car traffic is not necessarily a result of an increased school enrollment. However, with, Mr. Ritchie did share with me, uh, Mr. Ritchie with Guilford County Schools did share with me that there's been a significant change in car riders versus bus riders, right? So it used to be their assumption would be forty percent of, of the students, or let's say, I'm gonna say this another way. Sixty percent of the students would ride the bus every day to and from school. Now that number has dropped to roughly forty percent. And that is, uh, so you can see that on the yellow bar there. So that has impacted not just Stokesdale, but really all the schools in our district. Northwest Middle, Northwest High School, that school traffic is, is, is also very crazy, but those schools aren't in Stokesdale, so. Worried about Stokesdale here. So, but I do think that, uh, I'm just grateful for Guilford County Schools and Department of Transportation for finally committing to talk to each other and work on a resolution together. I think Guilford County Schools is committed to on-campus improvements, using that two billion dollar bond. You know, I'm grateful to see some of that coming our way. And I believe it will, uh, to, to relieve this issue, so. That, that's really what I wanted to say, just really to acknowledge, we all do acknowledge that, that it's an issue and, uh, you know, and hopefully we'll see resolution in the future. I'm not even gonna say near future, but that's government works slow, we know that. That, that's really all I have concerning the school track.
Do we, um, I was looking through the budget. Did, uh, the deputies actually work the school traffic and did we pay them?
Yes.
How much did we pay out?
So the total cost was nine hundred and seventy-four dollars and that fell under the thousand dollar allotment. I will note they increased their tiers. So typically in the past, we've paid the top tier. Uh, they've increased those pretty substantially. So we, uh, I basically did the math and, and did the highest tier that we could do without breaking the budget, so.
We had to pay for a minimum of three hours a day for one hour worth of work, but that is the minimum, so.
And there's also a ten dollar administrative fee per day.
Yeah.
That's, it adds up.
So obviously it's not tenable to do that beyond what we're able to do.
It's a shame to have to do that.
I don't wanna jump in front of anybody here, but Mr. Foy, to back up to something here, uh, there is an opportunity to close Tower Road that the town could have some, uh, could take the initiative on. We could request that NCDOT closed Tower Road and we could vote to take it, uh, to, to pursue that. I don't know if it should be done. Uh, based on what I know at the moment, I think it should be considered. But I think it also should be considered in the light of the, the ultimate solution, whatever that may be. And that's out of our hands, as you just pointed out. But, uh, just feel like I gotta say it, we could, uh, we could choose to pursue that or not.
It, it's certainly an option and I, I'd wanna vet out and, and, and kind of examine that option for any landmines that might lay in front of us that we don't see unintended consequences, if, if you will. But that certainly, uh, could be an option.
And, and also, I, I did a little research, uh, through the property records with Guilford County. And the Guilford County Schools, uh, definitely owns the strip of land where the, the railroad tracks weren't, once were. It was, uh, transferred to them, uh, maybe something like ten years ago, uh, by the owner of the property across the road. So that's not a factor. Guilford County Schools are in, in control of that parcel. At one time, I thought maybe, uh, we might be able to, uh, utilize that strip for whatever reason and, and, uh, uh, maybe even close that road and loop the, the, uh, drop-off line all the way around the gym. And I didn't know what all the options might be. But that definitely, uh, is owned by the Guilford County School, so we don't have to get in, we can't get involved in that either.
Right. I, I think they have several options to consider and they're looking at. And, uh, I would, I would offer that, you, you know, when Mr. Ritchie attends on November fourteenth, he may, uh, he may go into a deeper dive on, on what, what, uh, options they do have to make on-campus improvements. Of course, they can only, Guilford County Schools can only do their part on-campus and, and DOT would need to do their part with the roads.
Okay, so, uh, then, then I would conclude by saying we need to be sure we ask about, with him, just have a discussion about closing Cow, Tower Road and, and go from there.
Okay. That's really all I have on the subject matter. Uh, I know this impacts a lot of folks, so I thought it would be, uh, worthy of a discussion item.
Next, we have discussion of athletic field lighting project at Stokesdale Town Park. Mr. Foy?
I'll be brief here. Uh, you know, initially we struggled, uh, to receive responses back from potential vendors, uh, to light the park, uh, the soccer fields at the park. I'm pleased to report the town, Robbie's received five proposals from five different vendors. Uh, and we're in the evaluation phase now and I do expect this to be on next month's agenda, uh, to, uh, hopefully award, uh, the, the scope of work to, to one vendor so that we can get the project underway, uh, for public enjoyment, uh, by early twenty twenty-five and in time for this, uh, youth programs' spring soccer season. I do, uh, I, I do share my gratitude with all the, all the vendors that did, uh, did submit a proposal. Better late than never.
Is there further discussion? Consideration of town administrator, town clerk, excuse me, consideration of town administrator slash town clerk job description. Mr. Foy?
Uh, I've shared in the past, I believe, uh, as far back as June, I know I shared back in June of twenty-three that I thought this would be a good, uh, position for the town. So for right now, at this point, I just, just would like for Council, Council to provide any feedback that you may have on a proposed job description, for a town administrator slash town clerk.
I've read through the, uh, the, through the description that's in the, uh, in our packet of information. It seems to be what, what I have discussed with other council members, um, as far as what that town administrator would be allowed to do and would, uh, not be allowed to do, which I think is as important, uh, as the, as the duties.
Yes, the, the job description includes the scope of work, but also limitations to the role.
I think we should establish it. Is there some discussion?
Well, I, I have several points I wanna make, but I, I don't, I don't wanna jump in front of anybody.
Go right ahead, please, sir.
Well, I'd like for Stokesdale to be different and not set out on a path of, uh, large government and, and tax and spend. And one of the steps to do that along the way is to be very judicious with our payroll dollars and the number of positions that we have. We've come this far without it. Uh, you know, I certainly won't argue that there's some benefits to having the title. One of the things that pops in my head is the, the, uh, the language in the United States Constitution about bestowing titles and nobility, et cetera, et cetera. And so there's that. I wonder if we should, uh, consider other, other names for this position, uh, whether that be supervisor or director or I, I was, uh, joking with town staff, maybe boss, but, um, the, um, point I also would like to make that this is, uh, you know, for the citizens out there, I'm sure Council already knows this, but the town administrator position, there's no specific statute that describes the town administrator or delineates their powers. There is a write-up available to anybody who wants to look at it and Coats and Cannon on the internet, uh, that was published ten-three of, uh, two thousand and ten, uh, by Freda Blumstein, that I think is interesting reading. And, uh, it's very applicable to our mayor council form of government. It's important for anybody to remember and distinguish that we are not a, uh, manager council form of government. Those are very, two very different, different, uh, means of operating a town under the, the statutes that we're allowed by the legislature, so, um, there is that. You know, I, I generally, uh, tend to not wanna spend any more money there, here than we have to. Our, our budget continues to expand while a number of years ago, we lost our sales tax distribution money. And, uh, I, along with the rest of the council, has continued to vote for, uh, larger and larger budgets and, uh, pay increases and increased positions and fringe benefits. And so I, I don't know if, uh, it's not so much, much of a yes or no question to me is that we need to be, uh, slow and methodical getting there. If this is where council's going, uh, I see no reason for urgency. I have experienced this once before in the town of Stokesdale with a town administrator. I found it to be a very negative experience, uh, for. I found it to be a very negative experience for reasons I really won't go into. Insofar as this job description goes, there are a couple of places I've just really objected to having the administrator becoming the spokesman for the town and for this board. I think the community and public relations paragraph might need some tweaking because of that concern I have. God, I was speaking with one of you before this meeting, I don't remember who, Mr. Foy, you know, pointed out, there's been in the news, there was a debate issue between our two presidential candidates, and reference was made back to a particular town manager in Springfield, Ohio, that said, you know, "We hadn't seen anything, there is no problem." And so, there's information readily available that there may very well be a problem about that issue, so there's those kind of things that I try to think about and get ahead of any potential problems. The other one, and I particularly have a concern about, is disciplinary actions against elected officials. I would like for that paragraph to be modified in such a way that it also says that the town administrator has no authority whatsoever over elected council members, or something to that effect. The rest of it, I think, is generally is well-written, if you feel we need an administrator, you support the idea of an administrator, supervisor, or director, middle manager, whatever term you want to assign to this role in our town hall. Well, I'll stop there, I don't wanna dominate the conversation about this.
I've got a couple of things, too. Under continuing education oversight, I think the town administrator should also oversee requests and, in most cases, be able to approve continuing education for any of the staff members. The other thing is personnel management under limitations. I think there should be a special emphasis put on firing. This is where any employer can get themselves in a lot of trouble and be very expensive very quickly. I'm not sure that the firings need to be with the town's approval, but I think, I think we need to put some special emphasis on that, clarify it. It does say that the administrator cannot fire anyone, which is, at least takes it out of that individual's hands, but I'm not sure we shouldn't clarify it as to who does have the authority to fire.
So, to, look at that paragraph, and that's under the limitations of this job, it's under the personnel management. While a town administrator supervises town staff, the town administrator does not have unilateral authority over hiring, firing, or disciplinary actions without town council approval.
Maybe sufficient.
Mr. Winfrey, is this like the 10th Amendment of the Constitution in that any powers we don't specifically give to a supervisor, administrator, or boss would be retained by council, or does this need to be spelled out in every case that?
Well.
Where's the burden of proof?
Well, under our form of government, the council has all these authorities, and you're choosing what, which ones to delegate to a town administrator, if that answers your question. In other words, anything, all the power rests with the council, and so, you can choose as part of your authority to delegate some of these day-to-day or administrative-type positions to a town administrator. If you do so clearly, then there's no question about it. If you haven't done it clearly, then it probably still resides with the town council.
Have you reviewed this in detail to make sure that each paragraph is defensible for the board and that we have a good fit with the verbiage used?
Yeah, I did go through each of the items, and each of the items seemed to be consistent with what I understand the goal to be, to allow an administrator to make some of the more day-to-day and oversight positions with the guard, but I need to remind you that all this responsibility still resides with the council. In other words, if your administrator were to make errors in management or something else, the town's not gonna be able to say, "Well, we didn't do that, the administrator did that," that's still gonna rest with the town.
The governor and the legislature would still hold us responsible, is.
Or the courts, or legislature and courts would, yes.
What if he's going outside of our parameters of what we set?
Sorry?
What if he goes outside of what we set? What if he's, I don't know.
I think that would merit disciplinary action, however, there's no statutory responsibility.
Right, you know, if he, if you gave him a certain set of authority, him or her, if you gave them a certain amount of authority and they exceeded that authority, that's what the law would say is ultra vires, and it doesn't really do anything.
Would we be any more liable with him as a clerk?
Does it increase our liability from what it is now?
I don't see how that would be, and the only issue is if you, if you, if you didn't properly supervise or weren't keeping tabs on what your administrator were doing, then you have liability for that, if you're not kinda keeping your finger on the pulse of what's going on.
And that would go for, and that would apply to the, I mean, to right now.
That's right.
Right now, we're not changing those situations.
That's right. As long as you're, you know, you have a duty to kinda monitor what's going on, I would encourage you probably just to have an open-door policy to any employee to say, you know, if something's going on, we're available, just to be a.
Be the council.
Correct.
The custody of the official records, Mr. Winfrey, there's a paragraph in there about that, and I thought that was solely the purview of the town clerk. Can you clarify if that's conflicting with the existing statute that requires the clerk to do that?
Well, that was confusing, 'cause it says, at the very top of this description on page one, it says town administrator/town clerk, so it's, so it looks like you're combining the, proposing a combination of two positions.
Yeah, but we don't. That's exactly what I'm proposing.
We don't have to.
As I did a year ago and have mentioned probably two years ago in this meeting, my feelings about the matter haven't changed a bit.
We don't have to spell out what the clerk's already required to do, is.
Right, 'cause this is, this would be a clerk-plus position, if you will.
We're not relieving him of any clerk duties.
Correct. You're combining an administrator into a town clerk.
He's still responsible under statute for the clerk duties, the way we're setting this up.
Correct.
Assuming we were talking about, like, one person.
Well, yeah, that's what we're doing, is a town administrator/town clerk. I mean, I'm not, I wouldn't vote to hire a town clerk.
Agree, you know, it's, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if we're gonna get down that road, I won't vote for it, but if you're gonna do the combination, I'm, you know, I'm there.
Absolutely, the combination and the title mirrors what, exactly what is going on today.
Yeah, I don't feel like it would be too long, next budget season or the following budget season before we very well, or a council could be discussing splitting these and having a standalone administrator and a standalone town clerk, and maybe the addition of another deputy clerk, and thus the kind of growth in staffing and government that I, you know, I'd just rather not see happen. It's, one of the things that happens with towns, obviously, is growth, and we certainly have that in our population, and our budget reflects that, you know, it's growing whether I want it to or not, and, but I just hate to retire and come back in 20 years, if I make it that long, and see 35 employees working out of this building.
Well, there's no telling what's gonna happen in 20 years.
True that.
Depends on who's on this council.
Yeah.
They may hire, they might be like the town next to us, you know, a few miles away from us, I don't know what they got, 50, 60 employees, 2,000 people in town.
Yeah, certainly, we have some, some.
All up to the council.
Yeah, and we have some say in charting that direction, whatever it may be, for good or for good or bad.
With the current administration, this council, I don't think we are violating anything that would put us or the town in any kind of danger. I think all we're doing basically is giving our town clerk additional authority, excuse me, what I call formal authority, which is a title, that's basically what it is. It's the informal authority that an individual has that actually makes the job, or actually gets the job done. It's the informal authority, not the formal authority. You can call me President of the United States if you want to, but it's not gonna help.
Let's call him president, that'd be a good.
No, let's don't, I just, I tell you, I like my hoodie. I'm thinking about, who is the dude, who's the senator from Pennsylvania?
Oh, yeah, Featherman.
Anyway. While I'm fooling around, let me thank you all for not, or for giving up tonight and not going into Greensboro, but go ahead. Are we gonna, are we, are we voting to, or, excuse, I know we haven't had a motion. Are we voting to accept the position? Is that what you, is that your intent at this point?
Well, yeah, I thought the most appropriate thing would be to discuss the job description in open, I don't think it'd be valid to do this in closed session, so I'm just discussing this in open session, the job description, similar to what I did, I believe, in June of, although this job description's different. It includes the limitations of the role. In fact, there's four pages of limitations and only three pages of the scope of work.
Well, I have the same concerns that Tim has, except if us doing it the way we're doing clerk slash administrator, I don't, and, I mean, if something happened and we lose, you know, we lost it, we can always go back to clerk.
Absolutely.
We don't have to hire administrator, and I'd hope that's what y'all would do, 'cause one, you gotta get somebody here and try them, if you wanna, you know, in this form of government, and see, but I, you know, I don't particularly wanna grow government. I'd like to shrink it a little bit, to tell you the truth, if we could find somewhere to shrink it. I don't see that this will grow it, and it could be proven wrong, and I mean, the next, the next step, who knows, you know, the next council that comes on board, you never know what they, they may decide to have a police department, and there's no telling what, you know, anybody will do. I actually think this is, this sets it up to where maybe another council comes on, they won't have to make any changes. And like I said, Tim could end up being 100% right, it might lead to all kinds of employees, but I don't think so. You can always say you told me so.
I don't think we're, we're not marrying the titles, so, to your point, Jimmy, the administrator could be the administrator, one individual, and then again, in the future, and the town clerk could be another. I think, I think all we're doing is we're just, again, trying to give our town clerk or someone in that position, what, again, what I call that formal authority with the title.
It's an important distinction for me that these two positions remain combined, because I don't wanna have to vote to fund two separate positions.
Bingo.
Well, I'm willing to say that I will not, while I'm here, vote to hire a clerk.
That's fair, that's fair.
I will say that.
My point was that should, should we have to replace either position, that whoever we replaced it with would not necessarily have both positions again, that's my point.
Right, right, absolutely.
Agreed.
But what I'm saying is that I won't, while I'm in this term, vote, I have two people, administrator and a clerk.
But Mayor stated another way, you would be willing to have a separate administrator and a separate town clerk.
I hope he's not saying that.
If, if, if it came to that, yes, of course, as I would, you know, if it came to needing three more deputy clerks, if that's what it's gonna take, I mean, that's, that's why we're here. Do I wanna grow the government? I'm not really excited about growing the government, but I understand the concept of support staff, and it's very important, not only that we have the support, but it's also important that the people we choose to, to help lead our staff also have that support. But I'm open to, I'm open to any of it. Again, I could see where at some point we eliminate, we can't eliminate the town clerk, but we can eliminate the administrator if that's, if the council so chose, but right now, I think we're moving in the right direction, I really do.
No additional headcount. This, this is, this is putting, this is a new title for, in a job description of exactly what's going on, how the town operates today, with the, adding the title of town administrator to the town clerk position.
And I think if, if at some point you think in the future you may want to name someone to be town administrator slash town clerk, then I think it would be proper to have a motion to actually adopt this position, as you've amended it, you know, there've been a couple amendments to the, proposed amendments to it, to have a motion to, to create the position, but you're not binding any future board to do, but they still have all, whatever authority they need to make whatever changes they wanna make to this position.
We can't bind another board anyway, can we?
That's right.
I mean, it's not like a town manager, who you do a vote, we can't bind anybody, I mean, everything we do can be turned, turned around, so.
I think we're overcomplicating this. I think Derek is just simply, again, proposing a combination of titles. I think we're getting way off track on this. Nobody's wanting to add any positions, any money, binding the town or anything, so I think we just need to move forward and just keep a narrow scope of what we're looking at here, and that's just a title change.
Well, what's the problem this solves for the citizens of Stokesdale?
I think it goes back to this formal authority. It's, it's where the person who is our town clerk is able to, whenever they put out calls, "I am the town administrator and town clerk for Stokesdale." I think it gives some added credence to that particular individual.
So, you feel it'll streamline our operations and?
I do.
Help us get it done better and faster?
I absolutely do. But what it'll also do is it provides a leadership title for somebody who's already doing the leadership role, but has a title of town clerk, which can be just a stepping stone job, so this is a way to, this is a way to solidify, I guess, our staff leadership into that role, into, in a means of retaining, rewarding and retaining a high-performing employee. We're just gonna go ahead and have the closed session talk right out here.
I think, I think, and let me add, it also provides another step for employee management and performance management, and we're very lucky that we have very high-functioning employees, but we've not always been in that position, and what happens is that when you have a lateral chain of command, you know, I'm sorry, a horizontal chain of command, it doesn't, it doesn't allow a problem to be handled until it gets to council, and then I just think this provides a, a basic common step in everyday management that'll provide, you know, some oversight to our employees if they need it, or, and some guidance to our employees, you know, he can mentor, he can provide guidance, he can provide positive feedback, and it just provides that, that person that they can look up to and go to in the future if they need, you know, need guidance.
Well, it's definitely, it's definitely, I'm sorry.
Well, an example I have, and I guess Robbie, how awkward this is, but you can clarify if I speak wrong here, I believe an individual came into town hall last week or maybe the week before, and you introduced yourself as the town clerk, and he asked to speak to the person in charge.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I don't know where he is, but he lives down the street.
No, from a staff level. No, from a staff level. And that has happened multiple times. Also, Robbie serves on, what's the, obviously not the MPO, but what's the committee?
PTO. Oh, the technical, technical, TCC.
TCC. So Robbie serves on that. I think it's a
Technical Coordinating Committee.
With other town leaders that are titled administrator and or, you know, the other one. But clerk simply does not cover the scope of work that Robbie is responsible for today, which is exactly the scope of work in this seven-page job description, where three pages of it are the scope of work, what he does, and four pages of it would be the limitations of this role.
That's what I was gonna add, that he was already doing more than a normal clerk would do.
I mean, he's a got supervision responsibilities over the finances and the water, too, you know? Find me another town clerk that has that.
I mean, that's the
You can't.
That's the one that gets me. I mean, that's, he is doing more work than a clerk.
It's safe to say that I wouldn't be putting this forward if I didn't think we had the right guy working here. And it's our duty to, not, it's our duty to our town, that we do everything we can to retain the talent we have, you know? It is, we have not always been as blessed as we are now with, with our staff, and that's just all I'm gonna say about that.
Okay, so we don't really need to establish, we don't need to vote on the title. It's just the discussion that we have had. We make that change either in, in closed session or?
We certainly would be permitted to talk about personnel changes in closed session, but it would not, nothing would become official until an official vote of cancel in open session.
Right. Okay.
Will we do that after we come out of closed session to discuss that, or we're not going in? Does it matter?
Yeah, we, I would offer, I would like to go into closed session.
Whitland, I'll just add, I think Mr. Winfrey pointed out earlier, it may be good to adopt the job description.
Well, if you're, if considering making an appointment to that position, I think you
We need a job description first.
I would, I think you would
Which is the spirit of discussing this.
Right, but I guess I'm suggesting a motion that the town council adopts, ratifies, or adopts this job description.
For the title, yeah.
That makes sense. There were two sentences that Tim wanted added. You have those notes?
Yeah, I'd be glad to. If you wanna start your, well, I'll just, I'll have it in here. So I had two separate sections, too, from Councilman Jones, two from Mayor Crawford. I'll start from front. So on page two of seven, under Community and Public Relations, Councilman Jones stated that he would like to make tweaks to this. If you'd like to specify those tweaks, we'd be glad to make them.
Which paragraph is that?
This is gonna be Community and Public Relations on page two of seven. It's the second-to-last paragraph.
I don't wanna pay town staff to conduct public relations to the community groups. And I think in times of, especially in emergency, that those things need to come to the mayor or the mayor pro tem and let them decide whether or not they need to call a meeting of the Stokesdale Town Council or a response from them is sufficient, or perhaps direct staff to so-and-so and tell them this or tell them that. But under our form of government, I don't, I don't wanna turn on the TV news and find out there's a town that's taking a position about something I didn't even know about as a council member. And I'm not, certainly not saying that staff would be prone to that, but again, I just gave an example a while ago of that kinda thing and how fuzzy it can get. Do we need this paragraph?
I will note that there is a particular sentence in this paragraph that was requested by a council member, and that being ensure the log of concerns is maintained and regularly shared with the town council. So I think it's important to leave that in the description. It was requested, and I wouldn't, wouldn't think it's a good idea to delete the whole paragraph and that sentence included.
Mr. Jones, is the last sentence of that paragraph is what you're focusing on?
I tell you.
Strike it. The last sentence.
All right.
The last sentence. Patty, put your fingers in your ears. Don't talk to the media, okay? Don't talk to the media.
You got it.
I do, I do, would like to say that I do think that is an important paragraph 'cause he has represented us at book readings, at schools, and other things as requested that councilmen, you know, couldn't take off work to do. So I do see the value in that, in that paragraph.
Well, I mean, I, I, Mr. Riggsby, I don't disagree. There's no value in that. I just, with our budget being what it is, I just kinda feel like that sort of thing should be very limited, if done at all. But I certainly accept your point of view about the matter. I hope you'll see mine.
I, I do, and I don't, I don't, by no means think he needs to be spending more than, you know, I don't know, I wanna put a number on it, but if, you know, I mean, once a year, I think during book reading, the school usually asks, and I don't know what other town groups have asked you off the top of my head, but I don't wanna, you know, they're also part of our town, they're citizens, and if they're requesting something from, you know, the town hall, I think we should, you know, at least within our abilities accommodate that if it doesn't, you know, disrupt operations, of course.
Well, maybe just add the words "as needed" at the end of the paragraph then, just to make sure.
The part of it you're concerned about, Tim, is the media. Is that correct?
Well, that harkens back to a time in the town hall here when I remember a particular citizen wanted the town council to appoint him as the spokesman for the town of Stokesdale, and the council wisely, at the time, declined to do so. And with respect to any town staff member here, I just think in our form of government, again, that that's not a good fit. I'm not saying it'd always be wrong. I'm not implying that at all. It's just a, as a matter of general, general rule, I think this paragraph is a stretch.
Well, I would offer that that's, again, this is done, this is exactly what's done today. Establish and maintain effective communication with the media to keep citizens informed with the town's program and progress. That is what is done today in the, as the sunshine list, you know? This, all local media, of course, is on the sunshine list, and that is a requirement of the town clerk.
Well, it's, it's a statutory requirement, so it's, that's above us anyway.
Exactly. So I think it fits.
Yes, but does it open us up to a news conference?
To what?
Does it open us up to a news conference with our town clerk and administrator?
I have a sneaking suspicion if the cameras were outside this building wanting to speak with somebody, that one of us would receive a phone call.
I would hope so. In my own experience, I've had management people who have made some very stupid comments to people with a camera in their hand. I don't know what they were trying to do, but I don't know what my person was trying to do. But I think they put themselves in great danger by just answering a question that someone from the media said. I'm not questioning our town clerk's judgment at this point. I just think it's very, it's a slippery slope, even for us.
So it sounds like we need a media policy for staff, like many companies do have.
Not a bad idea. Not a bad idea.
What about a line on, some kind of a line in the limitations? Can we, what you want, but can we get in trouble for something never said or released?
Sure.
Get in trouble for about anything, man.
I mean, just because he says something, don't make it
Well, having an administrator involved in all town meetings and town-sponsored gatherings is one thing. Getting involved with community groups is, is just beyond the scope of what I think we need to be doing. That could be construed to be any meeting anywhere. It just all depends. Other public agencies regarding specific program services, but it's just very, not very definitive. Could be, this paragraph could be construed to cover anything at any time, anywhere.
So give me an example of what, what he might do that would cause us an issue. We're heading off things, I guess, so what? And then if he did, if he did
I'll go back to the example by the town manager of the town of Springfield, Ohio, making a statement recently to the news media that may or may not be entirely accurate, but it was represented as the gospel and put out to the citizens of the United States. So I'll use that as an example.
That's because the news media, that they don't, the fact is, they don't take reports on people doing that. I mean, I believe the guy probably told the truth about it. He didn't, he didn't have any information. I mean, they asked for his information. I don't like it because I knew that, but
Who was that? What was his position?
Town manager or something. I forget what he was. Town manager. But, you know, they don't report those type incidents in that town. You know, they just, you know, you know what went on there with that, with that debate. But I mean, what, the harm wasn't done by that guy saying that. The harm was done by the way the media represented it. And what, and what liabilities the town of Springfield have?
Well, I think Mayor Crawford's got, or I think I understand where he's coming from, and he understands where I'm coming from, and I don't, it's just impossible to know. We don't have a crystal ball, but we don't have, the town staff haven't been given such authority to up to date, up to this date.
What do you do now if one of the newspapers calls you and asks you a question? Do you answer it?
If it's a, if it's public information, I give it to them. If not, I reach out to you all. Typically, I reach out to Chuck.
What would you do in this? Do you think this gives you more authority to?
No, I don't think so. Personally speaking, I don't think so. I think it's a job of not just myself, but anybody that's in this town hall to represent the town. This isn't a, this is not a paragraph that is specific to a town administrator or a town clerk. I would hope that a deputy clerk, a finance officer, a finance director, a water system customer service manager would respect the town positively.
That's a good point. That is a good point. Whoever they come to first is likely to say the wrong thing. So maybe the, maybe the thing to do is to have some kind of a media policy. That makes a lot of sense, because they're not gonna come to Robbie first.
It's a good idea, Mike.
Are we ensuring that a log of concerns is maintained and regularly shared with council members currently?
Per the request of Councilman Landreth, it started September 1st, 2024.
What did now?
A log of concerns.
Oh.
Who decides what's a concern?
Any and every concern we get, we'll throw in there.
Well, you know, at one time, we were back and forth many years ago in the old days, trying to get, the council was trying to get a picture of the flow of work coming in and out of the town, and the, and requested a log of all the mail that arrived, and that, that became unworkable because of junk mail.
You would spend more time logging that than you would, than it would be worth.
Then you see my point.
This is
Talking about growing government.
If we needed a, if we needed a, this is, this is so we'll have information where we don't go spend, you know, somebody makes a complaint, then we'll go out and spend $10,000 because of one complaint. This will show that if we got complaints coming in, and if y'all feel like we need to vote the council for him to do that, you know, I'll be more than glad to put that forward, but
I personally, Jimmy, think it's a good idea, and I think that if the citizens have concerns, they need to get them to us. That log should be, you know, routinely reviewed, and if they're, you know, legitimate concerns, we can address them. And I don't see anything wrong with it. I think we're overthinking these concerns.
All of them.
And I think if, of, what makes a concern is a citizen that has a concern. I mean, that's a concern. If they've got a problem, then, and it becomes a concern. It doesn't have to be our decision if it's a concern. If they've got a concern.
Well, Mr. Riggsby, it can be just as simple as handing a list to this citizen and say, here are the five council members. Contact one of them or all of them.
We do that on the website.
Well, what do you wanna do, Tim? You wanna stop, you wanna stop doing this list?
This is public information. You know, nothing that Robbie would know and could give out, we haven't discussed in the council meeting at some level, be it a budget issue, be it a road improvement or water improvement. Everything that he would have a question about or have knowledge of would be a public, a public document.
State law already recovers, already covers the issue with public documents.
What are we hiding?
I'll, I'll just add, on this log that I have started, so far, there are two complaints on there. One being of GFL spilling hydraulic fluid or oil, and the other
Just a point of order. Let's wait till Patty and Kim finish their conversation. All right, sorry.
And, and the other, I believe, without looking at it, I think references the, the, the concern of dead grass being left on the soccer fields and on the walkway. And so what I have done is logged those concerns. I have put how I followed up with that, that being a conversation with GFL Environmental, and that being a voicemail left with Mr. Hunter. And my kind of agreement with Mr. Landreth is that I would just provide this to you guys on a monthly basis. It's a September complaint log. At the end of September, give you the list of complaints. And I think if you, you see the same complaint over and over and over, it would be prudent to talk about it. If you see one or two complaints, feel free to talk about it, but it may not be as prevalent as some may think.
I think that's the crux of this discussion. I think the discussion here is the authority that we're giving a town administrator to handle day-to-day operations, and that's exactly what he's doing. He's taking the initiative, making a phone call, because we don't need to wait until these complaints. You know, we don't need to wait a month, put it on the agenda, talk about it in a council meeting, that the truck's dropping oil, and he's make a phone call and handle it. And I think, I think that's what goes back to this administrative position is we need somebody that's gonna take the initiative and can handle day-to-day business, and I'm, I'm ready to move forward.
He's doing it now.
Mr. Riggsby, by going through this, it's also my intent to protect any future administrator from exceeding their authority and thus suffering any consequence for it, so it's, it's not, it cuts both ways.
But I think the council protects that administrator by, by limiting, we can limit his, his authority with the next agenda item if we, if we had to, you know? I think we always have that power to, to limit his authority or curtail any future administrator slash clerk's authority.
I do think if we, if we have some, if some issue comes up, then we can fix it.
And I would just say inherently of the town administrator title, there is no authority. It's, it's only the authority granted by town council. There is no statutory authority. There is no assumed authority. It is, it's granted by council. And that goes for the state. That is not this town.
I don't think we can cover all the ifs. We could take every paragraph here and cover, try to if this and if that, if a bullfrog will.
It was, it was put together using other job descriptions, very similar to town administrator or that of a town administrator. There's, I think, over 60 towns in the state that have the title, so there's a lot of job descriptions.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the, the job description as stated. I would also include in that motion that we develop a media policy.
Mr. Mayor, just a suggestion, I would separate that motion with a media policy to make it easier on all of us, but, I mean, up to you.
Discussion?
I agree with Tim. I think, again, we need to, certainly need a media policy, but I think that's a, something that we need to reach out to towns, as we've done in the past, and find best practices, and that can, that definitely needs to be a separate, a separate item.
Okay, I withdraw the media policy portion of that motion.
Second?
Any further discussion?
Will you consider addressing my concern that the town clerk, town administrator would have no authority over council members?
I think it's, it's
On page five? So it reads, the town, this is under the limitations of the job. Disciplinary actions against elected officials. The town administrator does not have the authority to take disciplinary actions against elected officials such as town council members or the mayor. And then Tim's additional sentence was the town administrator has no authority over any council member. And that's what you would like added, Tim?
It's a concern. Yes, yes, sir.
Okay.
We'll take that as an amendment. Do you have an objection, Mr.? We'll take that as an amendment. Do you have an objection, Mr. Foy?
I do not.
And then there was a, I think the mayor had proposed on the continuing education oversight that would be for all employees, not just the town clerk and.
I, yeah, I would think that, exactly. The town administrator would, would oversee any continuing education.
Overseas, but authorize the expenditure for same.
Yeah.
No, just.
No, just.
Monitor, find, you know, from a, from a, just if they need it, make sure they're getting in. If there's a cost, then they can come to us and, and address that. But I think monitoring is just, you know, recommending and stuff like that. I think that's a, that's kind of given in most, most agencies with a budget. You know, you just going to have to find it and then see if it's in the budget and then make a recommendation. I think that's pretty common practice.
That was the top of page four.
Okay.
So Robbie, just, just any staff member?
I got you.
You know?
Yes, sir.
And similar to what, actually not similar, exactly what you would do today.
Yes, sir.
It would come to town council to authorize the expenditure of that.
Absolutely.
Any further discussion? We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Rigsby?
Aye.
Mr. Foy?
Aye.
Mr. Landreth?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
I'm sorry. I, I just, uh, I appreciate your patience with me. I just can't do it. I'm late.
Okay. Motion carries four to one.
You voted aye.
I'm sorry. I voted aye as well. Uh, citizens' comments? Public comments?
Council comments?
Well. Are we moving to the end of the meeting?
We're going to a closed session? Are we just done?
We're going to go to a closed session, but we, but we can, we can close it out with ca- we can close the open session right now with council comment, can we not?
Uh, if you.
I for one would prefer not to unless we're going to adjourn after we come out of closed session without voting on anything.
Yeah, I, I'm going to have some words after.
Okay, so we'll hold off on the, on the council comments till after the closed session?
Yes.
All right. Here we go. I make a motion for the Stokesdale Town Council to enter into a closed session in accordance with North Carolina General Statute one four three dash three one eight dot one one, parentheses eight, parentheses six. The purpose of this closed session is to discuss the personnel matter.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Mr. Rigsby?
Aye.
Ms. Foy?
Aye.
Mr. Landreth?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I am aye.
That motley crew.
Hold order of that bunch out there. I bet, I bet T is a ringleader. He's gonna overthrow the government here in Stokesdale. One trash can at a time.
I move that we reconvene in an open session.
I second this motion. Mr. Rigsby?
Aye.
Mr. Foy. Mr. Foy?
Aye, excuse me.
Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I am aye. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a media policy. Robbie, we'd ask that you assist in that with contact of other townships.
I'll second the motion. Was you finished with the motion? I'm sorry.
I did.
Okay, I'll second.
Any discussion? Mr. Rigsby?
Aye.
Mr. Foy?
I guess, yeah.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
And I.
And I am aye.
I'll make a motion that we promote Robbie Wagner effective immediately to town administrator/town clerk with a new salary of $63,710 annually. That represents a $5,000 annual pay increase.
I'll second the motion.
All right, will take effect when?
Immediately.
Very good.
Would it be, would it, well, Kim, would it be easier to make it effective on a pay cycle?
Next pay cycle.
Actually, what is today, Thursday?
Today is Thursday.
Yes, because we are in the middle of one.
That's fine.
We are, we're in the middle of it.
It's a year.
We get paid next week, so we're in halfway through. And when we get it to start, it would be starting next week.
Uh.
Monday.
It, it'll all work out for the pay, I, I guess. I just, I, I'd like to see Robbie's signature on his email updated immediately.
You don't walk on my business.
I'll be here tomorrow.
He does now.
We didn't talk to you about that, Robbie.
He's the leader of town staff.
You know that part on the job description that said, "or anything else?"
Yeah, that was a good part. I liked that. I liked that.
It was a negotiation. They had to, you had to give up Fridays if you get promoted.
Did I tell you about shoveling when the snow comes? Did I mention? I mean, I'm not far down the road.
We have a motion.
We do have a motion and we have a second. Any discussion? Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Excuse me. Okay. Mr. Jones? I'm losing my place.
Let's start here with Rigsby.
Mr. Rigsby?
Aye.
Mr. Foy?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith has already voted aye. Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I am also aye.
Congratulations, Robbie.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn? Oops, let's do council comments before we get out of here. Yes, any council comments, please?
I'd like to just thank everybody for coming and again congratulate Robbie and most importantly, ensure he understands that he earned it and it wasn't given to him. And continue to do well and, and you know, this, your, your future is bright and, and we certainly, you know, recognize your contributions to the town, so we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Foy?
Well said, Jim. I'd like to thank my colleagues, Mr. Winfrey, the three folks, citizens in attendance, Ms. Patty Stokes, Kim, and congratulations to Robbie. I'd like to thank all staff. They do a fabulous job. Robbie, you have earned this and you know, we appreciate you, we value you, and continue to do the great work you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Landrith?
Robbie, you know I appreciate you. You do a good job and I hope you stay here for three more years in a couple of months at least. I want to address something, mainly for people that might be watching that sometime. We're in voting season and I'll not attempt to tell anybody who to vote for. But I feel like people's civic duty is to get out and find out about your candidates. Look at the information. There's more information out there. You've got the computer now. You can, you can find these videos of what people say. You don't have to take the news media's word because they, they just mess it up. The, the people in here, I don't think I'm talking to. I think everybody will do their job. But folks, get out there and, and look at these candidates and, and backtrack some of the videos and things and see some of the things that's been said and what's done. This is, this is real important. I can't stress how important it is. You know, I've got granddaughters coming up and grandbabies. I'm not worried about myself, but, but I'm worried about them. I'm worried about the way the country's going. I'm especially worried about my little girls. And just please get out, you folks out there, and, and, and look and, and vote like you think you should vote. I'm not telling you how to vote.
I'll echo what Mr. Limer said about getting out there and voting intelligently. Our citizens are far too apathetic, I think, but I'd, I'd like to separate Mr. Wagner into some component parts here. I support Mr. Wagner as a, as a, as a person. I find him to be very personable and he's always accommodating as anybody could be to me personally and to, as a council member. I support him in regards to this raise. I'm not sure that it's enough money in the competitive marketplace that we have out there for municipal employees across the state. And at the same time, this town is under a budget crunch. And then as a, as a town administrator, I just, while I'm at, I will support you as the town administrator. That's what council voted for, but I just don't, I don't support the, the position. I'm very concerned about some of the elements that will come down the road. I've expressed those for the record. Anybody that might be listening or might refer back to this, this audio or the tape, I would ask for them to, if they can find further information. Coates and Cannon, North Carolina law, schools, excuse me. Coates and Cannon, North Carolina local government law, the title being About Town Administrators, published 10/13/2010 and authored by Freda Bluestein. And that will, would give someone a lot of background if they're not familiar with these terms and how they apply on the statute and the two different forms of local government that are utilized. And I would request that, you know, you stick that somehow in an overview in the minutes for folks to refer to if they're interested in this topic, you know. And, you know, otherwise I'll thank the three citizens that we still have here in attendance and a little bit after 10. I don't think this is too bad for much, much business we covered. I, I, I thank the town council members for their, their patience with me and respecting my point of view as, as I do theirs and hopefully our citizens at the end of the day, while they may not be happy, they'll be contented with we're doing the best we can do with what we have to work with, with the circumstances and the monies we have available. Thank you.
Robbie, I gotta ask you. When I gave you that first phone call, did you ever think you'd get this far?
Ah, I, I hope so.
Good, good.
I, I hope so and I remember that phone call. I remember where I was at. I remember our conversation and, and I certainly appreciate that phone call. I wouldn't be here without it. So thank you for, for making that phone call.
Well, these, these guys know what they're doing. They, you can thank them as well. They're, they're, as soon as I talked with you, I got in touch with each of them as quickly as I could and, and I told them, you're the guy.
Well, thank you.
And you've proven to do that. So I wish you much success and I wish you much success with the town of Stokesdale.
Thank you.
We do want to keep you. We certainly do. And, and, and challenge you. So keep in mind the continuing education.
Yes, sir.
It's always good. I have one question.
Yes, sir.
I believe I read an email about PTRC.
Yes, sir.
We need a representative. Is that correct?
That's, that is correct. They, they have asked if you would like to nominate a delegate amongst yourselves to the PTRC Board of Delegates.
And they want it, and they want a council member?
Yes, that's right. It would have to be an elected official.
I.
If we hadn't expired yet, I'll nominate the mayor to do this.
Ah, shit.
I'll second that.
Volunteer. Why don't I get to volunteer anymore?
I'll third it.
Who's gonna, Mr. Foy, are you gonna object?
No.
Oh, God. Well, since I seem to have some time anyway and back on my feet, okay, I'll do it.
Thank you.
Yeah, certainly. With that said, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Oh, 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 hold on.
You gotta vote? Don't?
Do.
Do we need to vote to?
On the media?
No. Do we need to vote on you being the representative or we just?
Let's make.
No, it's an appointed thing.
What are we doing a motion for?
Go for it.
I don't care.
I, I, just in case there's any question later on, so it'll be in a minute, so I'll make that motion that Mayor Crawford will represent us with the Piedmont Tribe Regional Council of Governments at their meetings and so forth and report back to us.
Second.
Aye.
Foy?
Yeah, absolutely. Right here in the middle of closing comments.
Landrith?
Oh.
Aye.
I abstain. Yes, vote, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
I'll say yes. Okay.
I hear they have.
I've got some announcements here I'd need to do. We have a cancellation on the Thursday, September 26 meeting. This is the planning board meeting. It is the cancellation of, of their planning board meeting. The next regular Stokesdale Town Council meeting is scheduled for Thursday, October the 10th, 2024, at 7:00 PM here in the town, in the town hall.
I'd like, move to adjourn.
Second.
Am I?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Thank you all very much and I am aye.
All right.
These over there, is that what they're, what is that?
Pollinator.
Thank you, sir.
What was that exact amount of Mr. Wagner?
$63,710?
That's it.
Oh, goodness gracious.
Good job.